Say.
You talk for what you're doing.
Maybe to talk into it, is that what you want?
You gotta push it forward.
There we go.
It should be on now. Is this thing on? All right, so we ready to kick off? All right, so let's go ahead and kick off, let's do the, uh, do the typical roll call and go through that process and then we'll get into business if that's okay with everybody.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here. Um, let's do the, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
Tim, can you leave this in the pledge? We've never asked you to do it before, I hope that.
So. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of the liberty and justice for all.
What a special, didn't it, John? All right, so from here, let's, uh, turn it over to Tim and we'll let you, uh, take, take it out from here.
Um, so, uh, do you recall when we started this process, uh, last fall? With our through, uh, discussions and so forth, and ultimately with the, um, adoption of the government as learning in, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and goals and objectives adopted also. Um, as I promised at the time we put it together, uh, staff had prepared quarterly updates, we posted on the website, we could be head on, uh, make sure we're fully transparent and the public knows exactly what we're doing in terms of, uh, primary goals for. Uh, one of the things we also mentioned, uh, at that time, last fall, was that we would have, and did it sort of between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, time to come together from the board to look and see where we're at, sort of halfway through. Um, see if there's any adjustments we need to make since those audits, I mean, just generally has some discussions, um, and so this is an opportunity to. This is an opportunity not only to, uh, if you want to vary some of the overall goals that we had, as well as some individual objectives, but, uh, particularly to reorder some of those, or even to add some on, but, um, with all the caveat, I believe if you add a lot on, people have taken things away because we have a limited staff capacity. Uh, so what I've got tonight is, um, a bit of a powerpoint presentation for us to go through, um, the order is going to be, um, that of our, our goals, and that is the number one overriding goal of the board was, uh, to improve and enhance public safety in America. And so that's what we really want to check off when we start discussing, uh, both from the police perspective and the power perspective, um, then we're going to get into, um, uh, economic development, that is a hot topic we want, particularly in terms of the trial produce, um, initial revenues that can support public safety and the other activities of the township. Um, and then finally, we want to, uh, look with some enhancements, we're looking at our thoughts of the, we'll get things that we've accomplished so far, and to move the passion, uh, not with some, without any, along the way, but, uh, we, we got all that accomplished. And again, um, I would say that, you know, just as we team one of these things up, it'll just be open free flow discussion, uh, with the board and the department, and so what I ask the department has to do is, is we touch on each one of these areas that impacts them, that they can figure and discuss that, so as we start talking about against public safety from police standpoint, actually, proximally, we'll be here to talk about, um, new additions to staff, which we included last year. And, uh, the other things that needs to know with the department, even staff of the last year to really help, starting to enhance the public safety, and we'll go through the list, uh, Chief Ryan, uh, Mr. Koller, and, uh, so, um, was that, just when we get started, that's all right?
Yes, that's, that'd be great.
We'll get rolling there, so I'm just throwing out, um, initially a few numbers and, uh, Debbie thanks, thanks Debbie and to the plot, and, and pulling those together, I had, um, access, and then we had an upgrade to, uh, to our software, uh, with the software program. It wasn't loading for some reason, it's still, unfortunately, we don't have it, um, but, uh, this is, uh, this will start by talking a little bit about, uh, revenue, um, to, to budget, um, for twenty twenty-three, we tracked up the year, um, the first graph you see there is.
Is working the power. That'll work, I can. You want to volunteer?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
You know, I'll talk and work it out, I can follow. He wants to do it, he's, he's dying to do it, let him do it, let him do it.
Just give it.
He's gonna come get it if you don't give it to him. Be efficient.
So just a quick thing, a couple of items that the hip hop and, uh, slots, sort of time, and they, they time, uh, the first is, uh, our revenues, and what we're looking at here, uh, this graph, this chart, is the general fund, police fire, uh, fire need mess, road bridge, motor vehicle, gas, money, security, that's all, so all major operating funds are listed here. Uh, what's listed is the amounts budgeted, um, for the start of the year, twenty twenty-three, so general fund is nine eighteen, um, seventy-eight dollars, and the actual date will be three seven six, five six, um, and you can go down the list there to see the different items and how, did a pretty good job of seeing a lot of the revenues that were budgeted or anticipated at the start of the year. Um, we went over on fire, we went over on police, uh, honestly, we were a bit short, I mean, sorry, we're a bit short on the police, we went over quite a bit, general, uh, fund revenues, and a lot of that, Debbie, was because we've got a lot of it, it's the first time in ten years, I'm clearly helping, but we've set that front. Uh, running bridge, uh, lagged a little bit from, although we thought we were going to be a reference standpoint, um, some of the other ones to keep in mind, but again, we came in at above, um, all those accession to cemeteries, it must have been a slow year, um, cemetery, so it's, it didn't quite produce the revenues that we did.
That's okay. It's okay, I'm fine with that. I'm not gonna root for more cemeteries.
That's, 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 that's a good name, yes, of. And then on the expenditure side, like you can see, um, and I know, uh, Debbie mentioned this, uh, last, our last meeting, the department has done a great job of being able to, uh, keep, um, their spending, uh, the, the, uh, efficiency appropriations that we had of twenty twenty-three, so, and who goes on that, uh, it's really, it looks like in about all cases, uh, that we spent last, and hopefully, they should vote it in, other than maybe this, and maybe, uh, I see Debbie, we took over jobs and took money for rotating out of that this year, and so, and that, we kind of moved around a bit, sort of here. Anyway, that's enough to give you an idea of how we finish up the year, generally very positive, revenues, uh, more than we anticipated for the most part, and expenditures less than we anticipated, so, uh, that's good news, uh, the next graph, we have on the next page, there, this, uh, those shivers of occupancy that were issued, and, uh, we're kind of, but, but, there we go, uh. So the blue line is residential COs, who are issued when houses are completed, uh, and then the orange will be the commercial, as you can see, the commercial has been fairly flat in terms of new, let's take this occupancy listed for, um, the buildings, and that CO will include also renovations, so. They were gonna see, yes, as well, um, but, uh, the residential components continue to thrive, as you can see, even in twenty twenty-three, what we thought might be a downer, uh, we continue to have, uh, significantly announced certificates of occupancy, uh, that were, were approved, so you can see there, twenty twenty-three, we got nearly eight of those, we got a special, so, it's pretty, 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 uh, in the numbers works. Um, another graph that I threw up here just for your real information, um, Andrew and I, Andrew and I have worked on this, and that is, we talked about how many restaurants do we have, um, so we're integrating this, and a little bit this coming here, so we know every single type of business that we have, this township, so these restaurants, we did this because we're potentially trying to recruit, uh, we have restaurant food, we have come to, um, community, and so we wanted to see exactly how many restaurants we had, so it looks like we have about a total of forty-eight between both sides, so. Now, that starts at, uh, the interstate two seven five exchange, and it's in the town, this is the first, uh, restaurant that we counted, and we went all the way through to the ballpark, so we have a total of forty-eight restaurants, um, between Union and Taven, and that's the first township, um, and about sixty-seven percent of those are fast food, super fast food restaurants, um, the area outside are a couple of vendors that, um, that, we want the bar, just a bar, um, and then some thirteen sit-down restaurants, so, I thought that would be interesting from, just kind of where we're at, much of the bone of our business, you know, like I said, what we like to do eventually is, is do a full list of all the types of businesses we have. And have very broken down, uh, so, we're gonna start with, uh, our priorities, our goal priorities, and then, et cetera, uh, and that starts with the supportive enhancing public safety in the community, that was the highest ranking of our board moving forward. And if you recall, uh, we had a number of, uh, sub goals on the floor of that one authority, that were kind of sporting, um, pillars of our first goal, and that first sub goal was evaluating that greater township's public safety. And, uh, the board, uh, basically gave us a pretty clear direction, uh, last year is that, that we needed to start seeing where we're at, from our existing facilities, and where those need to be, some of the, sort of, expanding, or prepare, or whatever we decide to do, uh, i- if you recall, the, uh, the board had empowered us to have a steering committee set up, Mr. Kelly, uh, was, uh, the chair, that continues to be chair of that, uh, our department heads all sit in that steering committee, we had three wonderful residents of the community that, with this all along, and very, very valuable, uh, set on foundation, and all of us do that. I'm also, uh, I would say, not that, kudos to my state of hero, who's really done a nice job, uh, the listing job that they did initially has been very, very impressive, uh, they touched almost every single floor, like individuals, um, now that's what the local conditions are, what they would, what would help them make their job better, and we did a series of tours, I think, Mr. Kelly was almost all of them, so we'll be with her as well. So, hi. Um, so, uh, you know where we're at, which is right right now, is this, uh, giving me a lot of, I had some very ambitious comments initially, and we just never got quite, uh, done as quickly as we hoped, I think we hoped on that, but, uh, where we're at, obviously, the steering committees had their first meeting, and told us, uh, all of the initial work that we started, you know, that did to look at potential designs, uh, potential options, uh, I think they put out a full sheet of different options, um, whatever, right, like, um, that would be, and there you go, whatever, from terrariums building down, trying to build here on site, uh, to having sort of piecemeal, and we have a policeified facility, or the different, uh, facilities, so they gave us several different initial options. Uh, the one that the steering committee in our first discussion group would have understood, and we didn't really care for our most terrible, although down the track we built, there was rule in some about, from the steering committee as well as staff, how would we maintain service, services, that, so, uh, it's not to say that when it comes to the board, we won't have an option, but it's one that I think that we didn't fill out, that we, it's been a whole lot of time looking at this, I may get, and then just, a little night, and they're trying to figure out, I put so many staff into our facility somewhere, from A T to twenty-one, on the system, which would have to tag, tear it down, and then go for that. So, uh, that's, that's where we're at, we anticipate, uh, sometime in the next, in a couple of weeks, uh, friends there, Carol, just wanted to take the input they received from the first meeting of steering committee, and then we're gonna come back for second follow-up, we, um, I'm anticipating, probably a third, well, chief of yours, that, and a couple of the third meeting, uh, before it's ready, before the board to have more sessions, the board's able to have a more session with your steering committee, um, as well, friends there, Carol, and you're gonna start action some of these hours, so. We, I think we were all a bit shocked when it, uh, when it dropped off, it's getting worse by the day, so, fortunately, uh, it's, it's just something that will have to roll into, I think, when we do, uh, our financial analysis, and particularly our, our writing processes, uh, if you might have any questions on, on the facility analysis, or whatever, I'd like to speak.
Not at the moment.
I'll just sort of, uh, jump in, that, I think that, from my perspective, as chair, technically, I, I would like as much input from you two as possible, so if at any point you guys want to jump in, and you want to jump one of these meetings forward, you just let us know, because the, the, the purpose of this is to gather information, to, to come up with options, and to present them to the board, it's not to. Steering committee might be inappropriately named, it's to sort of, you know, create options for everybody, so I, 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 I think the, the committee has done a great job, and I will echo what Tim stated, uh, with the community involvement that we have, and, uh, and Bob Powell key, um, and, uh, and, and we have, uh, Tim Curry, um, and the, uh, Jonathan, Jonathan Wood, I mean, they're all just great people, they're, they, they really don't really seem to have any specific agenda, they're just trying to do what's best for the township, the department's heads have had a great job providing input, and Brands that are Carol has done a really good job of soliciting that input, so, um, you know, I just want everybody to be in, in the loop, if you guys want, if you guys want to sort of, you know, timeout, and let's see where we're at right now with the, with the, you know, just let us know.
So the leaning currently is towards, uh, retaining this structure in some form or fashion, or, I guess I'm asking a question, is that the leaning in retaining this in some form or fashion, and then?
There's certainly a particular lean at this point, other than maybe not tearing all this whole thing down, trying to build on site, it's just, you know, we looked at how footprinting our logistics of getting, they have, it just, it can be very, and either John, John, or the different departments, so, I mean, our, our police officers are out, weaving around, John's out there assembling their equipment, and the wings where, four kind of below, and if you looked at a scenario, building a new facility, anyway, we still have to maintain something here for response times, because, I mean, you, you move away from this location and the response times to seven forty-nine, Hopper Hill, left inside the community, or redness, if you're not something here, so.
But I would offer that, from a police perspective, our service demand is out on one twenty-five, um, the old village of Amelia, um, you know. Parks, Sedona Ridge, and, and so forth, so I, you know, I think it's prudent to move the facility, we are going to, uh, build a facility closer to our service, um, and I think, A, some agreement with that, where we provide a good, uh, venue for planning and zoning as well.
So, so, so I understand what you just said, what, what you're suggesting is, is that you would move closer to one twenty-five?
Right, okay. Well, perhaps partially, because we had a lot of different, we all have a lot of different options, we have, uh, you know, sort of, we could tear down the facility and build a mega facility on this, we could keep the facility and sort of add on to it, we could keep a, a, a facility and add on to it, you know, to a smaller extent, and then put a substation for the police, uh, and fire, closer, you know, that, so Brands that are Carol has provided multiple options, and in fact, we probably need to make sure that they at least have those options to start looking at them, uh, currently, and, but the, the, we just had, well, we sort of had this, we just had it, we had it before the holiday, holiday, or at least for me, everything's.
Yeah. So in, in the case of the, of the police department, that, I get that, there's not a lot of overlap with other, you know, other agencies, the central joint is just right around the corner, does that work? Does, does that synergy work for you as well?
I think sharing with another fire department creates issues because of it.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying if, if we were to find a location closer to one twenty-five, to have at least a satellite location, that would work fine, so that way we could have all, you know, kind of a, a government complex, simple as that.
Yeah, looking at the whole scenario, if it's a, a facility, well, we supply a share, we're, we're great with that, so, accommodation, so like we have today, but, you know, I think the benefit we all have is, we're used to making it work, because we've been forced to, which isn't bad, so I think.
Well, I'm not worried about the two, I, I'm not worried about the, you know, the, the crew, because you guys are, are great, you know, the, 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 the way you guys work together is, is fantastic, but it's the question of efficiency, you know, if you've got, you know, when we saw that, that, that chart, um, in the, in the fire study, the most efficient, well, one place we had a really, a big hole is over toward the Hopper Hill area, um, but I don't know that I see putting a, a fire station over there anytime soon, but putting something over on the Amelia side, or the one twenty-five, uh, area, and putting it all together efficiently.
Yes.
Does that, does that help that, that chart, because I don't have a chart in front of me.
Brands that are Carol, brands, response time, for me, and they were very similar to what Mr. Kramer, who spoke to during the Kramer study, of the response time, indicating something up in that area, is definitely a huge benefit, and looking at it from our response, so ours is kind of two, it's not only the facility here, it doesn't meet our needs, but also that part of the community is, is growing, uh, and still maintaining what we've got to the rest of the community, and so up in that area also gives us decent response time in the handled area, down one twenty-five corridor, it gives some great overlap on, uh, down to the seven forty-nine, and where our, the Ohio town station is, creates a good overlap of those three response areas.
So one option could be, is that you put a twenty police or fire or something in that area, and then you create, uh, you know, you would still want, make perhaps a police, definitely a fire presence here, and, but you would create extra, right, you can move some of this stuff, and then you could expand, perhaps, the administrative offices here, within this building, if you were to create it up, sort of offsite, and I think as, from a response time perspective, it's demonstrable, that'd be better for you to bring.
Yeah. Our service studies demands on the, the Amelia area are more than I have anticipated, they could be, continuing to grow as things are growing up there, but Chief Rock and I have even talked, looked, and talked with, and press their heralds folks, so, you know, ways to reduce costs and increase some efficiency, do we both need our training room, because that's often that we can share, you know, we share a lot, and some of those things that we can overlap and, and coexist together, it could reduce some of the footprint, some of the cost, and.
And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and so, this whole conversation came about, this is one of the real good values of the steering committee, gives a conversation for, you know, organic, our brands that are Carol's kind of, inquiring about service delivery, how do we maintain services, how, and then also longer range, how long do we, how do we best deliver, I call it service, and even down to planning and zoning on our walk-ins, I'm pretty sure the sanitary and so forth. Both of you, this is based on the population, that's.
Right.
And it's all sort of, start to make a bit of sense, now, of course, it's not for more of a base committee yet, or anything with that effect, but it was an interesting topic came about where we were thinking short term, hey, how do we maintain a standard level of service during a construction phase, then I was like, okay, wait a second, what about five, ten, fifteen years from now, where are the populations that are going to be, and where are those bands going to be, and also, are we going to be able to buy and sell public, for instance, that, nor is your quality and access to service actually here now, as opposed to, at, you know, standard status below, or sort of, so that's, those are some of the ways that we're trying to attack this, maybe, so.
And the other, sort of, pitfall to be aware of moving forward is that, if we were to decide to spend a lot, a considerable amount of money here at this facility, in order to expand it, we weren't to create another facility, we would actually probably be faced with creating another facility at some, particularly with the fire, so you would sort of spend a, a load of cash here, a lot of it, to expand everything, and then all of a sudden, you have, you, you're faced with having to put another facility, police or fire, and okay.
In, in, in any event, I mean, five, ten years down the line.
Right, not like the next day, but, yeah.
It's like the old commercial, right, pay me now or pay me later, yeah, right.
Too young for.
One other point, coming out, that my thought was, receiving that last discussion, and that was, and everybody's rules got a turn to hold, that, that if some sort of flavor, uh, facility was in that area that we service, it could also be a challenge for some of the, as well, potentially, so, maybe you get an additional bonus out of that, in terms of increasing some energy and some synergies, and, um, you know, we have other different facilities that are down in that, as well, so, just a lot more to think about, I think, is, is, where we're, we're still at, like, on the baseline of this.
Yeah, sure, but I think, I, I wanted to bring everybody up to speed here, and, uh, we'd make sure we share all the information with the other two, as far as what, what our options are right now for Brands that are Carol, because.
And I think one thing that we kind of talk, I know Debbie and I have talked to, uh, the, the operational efficiency, those is today, like, we had those nights of talk where you guys have to have a meeting for whatever reason, but zoning commissions meeting, or something else, I'm sure I'm going to figure out how it's going to work, and, you know, when you design a facility in line of, like, next to your access to a trading room, that if somebody had moved to that other location, you could essentially have that meeting there, but not impact the operations of that building, not, mission was to apply with our harvest code rules and everything, so you can have access control, which would give us, you know, a small advantage that we don't have today, and in another part of the community, especially if you get into a project where you're trying to solicit input from different parts of the community, what kind of stuff are we?
Well, from my, from my perspective, I, I really appreciate the work that the committee's done, I mean, I, from what I've, I've heard in previous discussions, and, and what's been confirmed today, um, it sounds like there's, there's a, a, a deep dive that's going on, on all of this, and a lot of consideration that's going into it, my big concern is just, is response time, making sure that we're, that what we decide to do is going to be the plan for the future, and not, not next two or three, four years future, but like a twenty, thirty year future, in that it's, it's meeting that response time need, as we're looking in that, in that horizon, so I, I really appreciate the work you guys have, have done toward that, toward that goal, so, I appreciate it, and I look forward to digging into it a lot deeper, uh, over the next few months.
Maybe, maybe also a little bit on several too, we need to improve service levels, and increase staff, and, um, the person funded that was to, um, put two full-time and then part-time control officers, additional, so they're going to be piece of, and, and she brought some more up there, you know, that, but, and then the other was to look at a potential additional staffing within the fire department, um, but that's a little bit longer than the rise, and, you know, maybe Chief, uh, Ryan can talk about that just a bit, um, particularly as it relates to, of that, we'll, we'll touch on, uh, there tonight, but, so Chief, I don't know if you want to talk about, and both, uh, the new staff that you brought on board, and how that's putting some of our service levels.
How that's putting some of our service levels, um, but also some of the other things that you done, I think it's been really exciting. Past year, by blocking those, um, software upgrades and other things you know, uh, more directed controls. So you uh put the uh issue of our first, you know, eighteen, one, two, twenty plus one party. Uh, we want to make sure we get a good pick, uh, because in a small department that's critical. So uh, next week, uh, Adam Rawl, our twentieth officer starts, which is very exciting. And the whole idea here is to go from a supervisor and three officers on every shift. To uh, three officers and supervisor. Which is very important because we have a very tender uh department and they accumulate. Off time, which they cannot pay because whether somebody's sick or on vacation. You know, adding to the complement will allow us to, to still have a decent service, uh. You know, delivery as well as letting people take long deserved time off. So I think we have got private part time officer yet. Um, one idea is uh Jay Shaw retires in February. And he may become our time officer. Uh, so we are interviewing right now for Jay Shaw's position. Uh, we have very good candidate, I think, I pride myself on the fact that we have people really seeking out our department now. Because you see us as a department under rocks and uh. You know, we, we've had following interviews and four are soon to be open. And I think we're going to get another top notch uh individual uh that will come on the work probably. The part time officer, we will, you know, take our time on that, see if Jay Shaw would uh. You know, fill that position. I have some other ideas on the part time position that I'll get into. Uh, we're in contact negotiations right now with you. Uh, we are going to mediation. Some issues relating to uh financial matters such as salary, such as uh cashing time. So, so more of that to come down the road. Um, we're still on pace with replacing one. Of our vehicles every year, we keep our freedom date. Uh, we are going with the titles moving forward. Um, getting a lot of good feedback on the uh new vehicles, the, the color design of the vehicles. The uniforms are a big hit. Um, so that's a huge uh bonus for us. We appreciate you allowing us to purchase new uh vehicles. And new uniforms. Uh, our mobile data computers and cars, we're systematically replacing those. Over the next three or four years by only buying three or several every year. Uh, keep up with the technology. And then you overdid a proof of concept with two block cameras on one twenty five. Uh, we are currently seeking a grant through the state of Ohio. We have to purchase eleven additional. It is every ingress, egress, you can expect it now. And right now, believe it or not, your township is the only department in this region. Uh, that covers the hedge block cameras in the southern and eastern part of uh Tempon County. So us being western gateway that Cincinnati and, and uh Gideon and everything. We think it's a good idea to uh put cameras in every ingress and egress one. It does double the price that we got this grant. We recover seventy seven thousand three fifty, which is. Eleven cameras they add on to our two cameras. So that's one year grant possibility of uh having a uh reoccurring figure every year. If we didn't get that recurrence from the state, I would almost look at. Uh, would it be prudent to take uh what we would pay a part time officer? And find that thirty three thousand every year to keep those cameras in place. Because the cameras are the force of the law, right? We get alerts on our, uh, car computers. I mean, one is subject to the area, whether a critical missing uh is in our area. We can filter, you know, it's, it's web based, so we can share all this information with other agencies. And block cameras are the next gen uh automated license plate readers. So many uh agencies throughout Southern Ohio are going to this uh state of New York. And it's, it's so good. And so again, we will assess uh the cameras that we have right now. After the first year, make sure that they're doing what we want them to do. Uh, but just because we get this grant, as we, we have to accept it, we have to be with the verbal trustees.
Tentatively for your plan for one year? Is that the current? Okay. And there is an opportunity, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it covers the installation of the cameras.
That was going to be my neck. Seventy seven thousand?
Wow. But the reoccurring figure after year one is thirty three thousand. Your service.
That's for the maintenance of the cameras, the upkeep of the, the technology. Uh, okay, okay.
So the criteria in which you're learning to insert car from, you know, out of the township before. The area is that, how does that happen? Is that, you know, so. Yeah, it, it, can you set the criteria? Is I want to alert everybody that has blonde hair? Or I want to relate everybody that doesn't have. Any more? Are, are you able to pick and choose that criteria or is that, is there some kind of standard for that?
So all our portion agencies will put stolen cars into this system. That will automatically alert the agencies when uh that car passed through or critical missing. Uh, that could be so.
So it's, it's, it's perky, it's, it's narrowed down to just as purpose.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, it's not meant to uh identify drivers, right? It says capture drivers, captures vehicles. And block has a technology to capture the vehicle itself, not the plate. Because if a vehicle does not have a plate or it has an extractive plate, you can filter this by. Uh, the victim on the scene said that the suspect left a red vehicle with a bumper sticker on the rear. You can filter this system to pull up every red vehicle with a bumper sticker that passed through the pier's channel.
Sounds like you just described my car, my truck.
Which is pretty, uh, pretty deep. It's uh, but the, the information is only ten thirty days. Uh, and again, it's not meant to pick out individual drivers or do any kind of a steam horse.
Since we're on the gateway, like you said, the gate, Western Gateway, Hampton County, is there any opportunity for at least some cost sharing with the sheriff's department on some? Entry point cameras, just on, on the periphery perhaps, or is that something that they even do?
We're hoping that the sheriff's department will cover, you know, the most high one twenty five. And uh start to cover all of the, the camera as well, because then this is only going to expand.
Right.
And again, uh, Miami township just added thirty cameras yourself. You can announce whether this can come on board. So more and more agencies, it's really taken off and came to the county. And uh, Westchester is a lot of.
Have you seen any, any uh, uh, data from some of those departments, um, and the success rate? Uh, and some of the departments that have really adopted it?
I don't have that, that, I, I will tell you, I think I mentioned this before, we had a new bank robbery. Uh, now hopefully we add a block system and through that system, we were able to identify our vandal. Uh, that probably would have meant anything that identified without creative block.
Well, I think back to just shortly after you got here, remember there was the, the, uh. Group of people that were going around in, in Amelia and other places and they were, you know, driving in, stealing things and then taking off. That had that been the place. Yeah, right, yeah. And so that to me, and that. Could have been a moment where a flock camera might have caught them.
Correct.
Or at least if they knew they were here, might have made them go to another community.
Yeah, we have an informational uh here on our website that kind of explains block, uh, for people that may be a little wary of. They're rather logical, right?
It does cross my mind, it does, it does concern me.
So who, who provides the data? So who says this is a beautiful issue, fly? Where do you get that information?
From other agencies as well, or.
Because it's, it, to me, it, it, it does sort of beg a question, like from the ideological perspective where. You know, you could say, you know, you, you, you cut the bank, you cut the bank, so this justifies all this, right? And if really, at, at, at some extent, we could basically keep complete, we could eliminate bank robbers. Eliminate all crime and eliminate the most of it. If we just put a chip in the bank and just, we'll just cut in your hand, we'll just put a chip in. It's not a big deal. And we just, we know where you are all the time, right? So there is somewhere along that spectrum where I'm sort of a little apprehensive because I just want to know. Who's, who's providing the data? Who's making the calls as to who gets stopped, right? Because that could, you know. It could sort of be, be a double edged sword if somebody decided. And I don't need to be too, you know.
Yeah, well, and, and the thing about block cameras is legendary or private organizations keep running cameras themselves. Right? They wouldn't enter information into them, into the databases, it would be. You know, us entering alerts in bar, we would be able to tie into those.
But I'm actually fine with that because legendary is a private organization or private H O A. They decide to create what cameras. Community and catch whatever information you want to attach. Actually, sort of zero problem with that, yeah. But when you start going down to, you know, the main drag. Island twenty five, it just depends to me as to how that could be. Not how, how you intend to utilize it. It seems very, you know, in good faith, but you know, good.
I, 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 I've had some of the same concerns about it, you know, morphing into just. Chips in everybody's neck or anything, but.
That was, that was the end of the spec.
Yeah, I know, it's, it kind of scared me.
Yeah, uh.
Well, the only thing that does concern me isn't that I, you know, the whole issue of, you know, the, the uh. Stoplight cameras and things like that. And I just wouldn't want to see this become that. And that's, it's more of a pedestrian version of what you were, you were outlining, but it has always concerned me that, that. You know, this is, but for a flip of the switch, it becomes that. And so that, that has concerned me. Uh, about the cameras, uh, all along, which we've discussed. And um, I'm anxious to see the results of the, of the. Um, the year, you know, of study, um, and.
Keeping a spreadsheet to uh track successes.
So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what kind of raw data. That's why I was curious about what other departments have, have seen, but. Your point is well taken, as a slippery slope, I mean, what would it take to just flip the switch? You know, now I'm looking for all cars moving over thirty five miles an hour in a forty, in a twenty five mile an hour zone, you know? And that's, that's not what we, it's not why we want to, you know, be, be on the lookout, but yeah.
This doesn't, just for clarification, it doesn't measure.
Yeah. Technology is, is easily changeable and it grows and flourishes and this board of trustees may be. You know, long gone and someone else might say, you know what's a great idea? Let's put chips in people so we know where they all are.
Well, I wouldn't worry about that. That's why I have third, they pay us. How it's, yeah, you know, keep an eye out for this.
Look what we can do.
For this car, that's, you know, you know, it's a car of interest, right? You guys have to pursue that. Uh, car of interest to somebody, you know, that's something, you know, it's just. It, it is an AI and stuff like that. Once you have the data, once you have the, the, the video footage, once you have that, it can decipher all kinds of stuff. It decipher, you know, uh, cars, types, people, and it may have, you put a bunch of cameras everywhere. And once it deciphers what's what, it's really amazing stuff. It's maybe in a good way, but not always.
It's worth, worth being concerned about.
I think that the average law abiding citizen should, probably won't have any concerns over this because they're law abiding citizens, you know? You're not doing anything wrong, then they shouldn't really necessarily, you know, concern, you know, the average law abiding citizen. Isn't it, um, overseas in England, for instance, they call it what CCTV, where they capture everything, anything and everything?
Yes.
This, this is not that, I understand that, but this is.
Yeah, the Trump, sorry, all of the. Most of the authoritative states, or if you're not doing anything wrong, you don't worry about it.
Well, there is that balance somewhere, right?
So, so right, uh, I want to move on to Chief Ryan, because uh, obviously we had any common study for our participation today. A year ago, and there were two nominations made in there. So Chief, whatever you wanted to do, kind of, whatever they. I think one of the biggest. Three factors we had last year is about some stuff we were bringing in grants and donations. Three copies that are coming out of the last year. And, you know, all of which were relatively small awards, nothing tremendous. So a long time after all, a lot of our folks. Pulling together information to get there. Um, some of the other things we did, you know, we, last year. Police and fire were close to the fall three of our schools. Um, last year, we did stop the weed class for all the staff, normal entry and all the staff that helps for our country. And no cost to them, uh. Myself, yeah, and we also did, I think, uh, we also did uh for all the service department staff. Um, and. As a ratio staff, and we went to partner with, with the service department and worked with them to get some stop the weed kids and put on their trucks. So if they're out walking on a job site, you know, equipment failure or something, there's a significant injury, it gives them just. Buy them a little bit of time until we can get there. I think that was a huge feat for us. And I don't know of any other community around here that's, that's done that on their service department. Schools are the same way, uh, Los Caiman, Anderson School bought equipment for the schools. So we went in and provided the training for them. We did some of the training, not the formal classes, same or that, but it's on, on their radar. With things that I think was huge. We also ream and lend our, our CPR, which wasn't hugely successful. Uh, but we did have a couple of classes, like one had eleven or twelve, and so we probably total for the year twenty five or so people. So I think we can, can raise that mark, but ream and lending that was, was a big feat. Part of our first new replant software, in addition of, of Jim Watkins and Mike Magic, it's been a huge. Huge benefit for, for me, for the department, for the community, just having that, those actual cans on a day to day basis. I'm kind of dipping up some of the responsibility. You know, Mike's handling a lot of the sort of development and operation stuff. Him is doing uh all our plan reviews, all of our fire inspection stuff, the pre-plans. Uh, we spent a lot of time with zoning over the last year, working with Eddie and Andrew and bridging some gaps in existence as we have. Of not sharing information or, or sharing as much as we could. But I think we made a huge strike with that. So with the implementation of that software, it's not completely operational yet. So there was some issues with the company. The data that was, was imported, got all messed up and they had to basically start over wipe it and. We're getting it a point where if you want, it's huge for, for ours. Uh, we talked a little bit with police department, what, how I can help them. So essentially gets a page from our CAT system with a run. Uh, it's can be loaded on our same computers we have in the vehicles. And it pulls up a map to the incident, which we already have mapping. But it also pulls up whatever information we put in there, do drawings of the building, we can do pictures of. Hatters materials, hatters for our staff. Um, if there's an apartment above the business, some of those known hatters that you may ordinarily not see in the notes on the NBC. If we don't do the information or we haven't completed it, it pulls from other sources. So we spent a lot of time meeting with county G I S folks. Neighborhood departments that use it. So it'll pull, where Jim was testing a little yesterday, it'll pull, for example, Otter's information. So when you're responding to the incident, you already know, you know, the name of the, of the owner of the property, the size of it, some of those things. So it's a huge tool we didn't have before that was manually. So it's a huge tool we didn't have before that was manually kept. On a spreadsheet or on a list that wasn't updated as much as it should have been just because of time constraints and so it's going to be a huge benefit to us. We really started with, with Jim coming on, getting part of our fire inspection program again, that was suspended during COVID. Staff's done an awesome job for the, the community, and we ran into a lot of challenges, so what's, we're doing fire inspection in buildings now in our community. That we've never been responsible for, have never viewed plans for, and have never signed off on before. So we have a lot of things we're having to work. Jim, Jim and I went out to a business on Main Street. Uh, week before Christmas, they're getting some alarm work done and some of the things inside don't necessarily achieve what the code says. But we didn't approve it, we don't know what we intend, well, when it was approved. So just spending the extra time to work with those business owners or try to do what's right, but do what's, you know, what's legal and not force things that we can. So there's been some challenges up there that we didn't anticipate, but we're, we're pushing for it, get through it. Through whatever brand opportunities, we're able to add those to cameras to our second night ambulances. So traditionally, we have our first night ambulance and our engine. If you get another call, the engine crew will jump over to the ambulance, you take the second out and run. Usually the first ambulance, you're not, relatively it was short amount of time to staff the engine. But we didn't have those type of equipment on the second I ambulance. So what was happening is that crew would leave. They would move the vest helmets from the engine over, so they'd be out of the road without that equipment. So in two thousand twenty two, we used the stadium F grant to buy a bus with vests. And then this year, we use the E F S grant to add the, the helmet. So all four of our ambulances, all the engine staff are all set up with the same equipment. Just to keep our folks safe and make sure that they have what they need.
Helmet stock holdouts here.
What's that?
The helmet stock holdouts.
Yes. The U T V project, which was had a long time coming, still a little bit of work in progress, a lot, a lot of that was taken with donations and brand. Still not done, um, Chief Brock, what I talked about, we got the equipment now, and we ensure our folks stay safe using it. So, uh, this Chief Watkins, Captain Shins, Captain Walker, and several of our staff. Work with the service department, identify area of pierce preserve and tracks. Um, that they spent a lot of time over the summer, especially clearing the training trails for police and fire to use. To get our folks how on the ground and get some experience driving that vehicle.
Chief, I missed, what did you call it? The, the, what equipment?
The player side by side.
Oh, okay, that, okay, U T V, okay, alright.
So we, we have to sign it, we still got to get to ensure the public stays off of it. So if it's got some inclines, deep line, just some things that we thought. Police and fire would encounter, want to make sure our folks are trained on how to operate that and put in to keep themselves safe. The recruit aside, we're just showing phones, we're, we're constantly looking. We've got a couple of open fire paramedic positions right now, posted a couple of times and divided interest. And there's also departments all over the city in the same boat we are. One of the, a few of the things that we're doing, uh, Jim Watkins is on the boards of Scarlet. So he's gotten us involved and they do some interview days with their, their high school class and their adult classes. So we've set staff up, started to interview these, these folks that are graduating, and we've got some really good employees out of that. We've sent staff to West Claremont High School to do a career day. Last year, we sent people over to that just to try to get. You know, it's longer term fix, uh, but trying to get some kids in high school interested in doing this as a career and becoming a first guy. Uh, through our contact I had since that state, they've started a shadowing program for their recruits and their fire department. They have to go spend so many hours in the firehouse, shadowing the crew. Probably check shots clean, just see, just try to figure out learn what likes like in the firehouse. So we had our first student through that, uh, and a lot of people will be any of their members. You know, hopefully it's another opportunity to try and get some interest from people with some of your section. But one of the other things Jim had really been working on is, you know, we've been there to our staff, you know, all options are on the table, trying to find people. If we're not finding firefighter paramedics, maybe there are some paramedic onlys out there, a lot of firefighters. That would want to come in here as a paramedic, you know, with them, maybe we can basically go to fire school, but maybe not, so. He's been working on with this flawless on what that looks like because of being a medic only. Um, they're not exempt from some of the same things that they have firefighter titles, so they would be a P R S essentially. So you have some P R S contribution, um, they don't have the fairly standard night exemptions. Or firefighter hours, so the scheduling would have to be a little bit different. They would get overtime over forty hours and. Just working through what that would look like across operationally and think that's a viable solution, but one of our committed, at least. Turning over and seeking for a lot of us. As far as adding staff, I love to add staff, you know, big, big issue we have, well, we have two big issues. One is money. So we did the last levy, levy, you know, we had to check out what we thought of spending for ten years. Uh, we knew with the amount we got that we were going to be eating into the carryover. And we were going to be spending more than what we were bringing in. So we've done a really good job of not biting into that like we should be at this point. Someone that's been through grants and other things and just cutting back and watching, but, uh. We're at the point where we're going to have to start eating into some of that. Just so you're aware, so it's, you know, we will be spending in a deficit, but it was designed that way. The board's desire at the time, and it was planned out, it was going to occur. So money's an issue of, of more staff. The biggest issue we've worked on, if we don't have extra beds, we want, so we don't, we're getting busier. Uh, over last weekend, at one point on Saturday or Sunday, we have G Ds and towns with ambulances. In our township, come all over, you know, from out on the grounds. So I mean, there's definitely a, a benefit to adding some people, we just don't have the facilities to be able to do that. And finding the people to fill those positions.
This is a, this is sort of like a, you know, mathematical equation. Can't really lie about it, can't really try to fudge it, it is what it is, numbers are numbers. And if you look at these numbers, I mean, you know, the, the issue of space, so some sort of facility expansion and the issue is. It's people as well. I mean, that, that's just going to be a, a decision the residents have to make, right? And they're going to decide. Do I want to for a little more tax money in order to have a certain level of service or? Because clearly it would continue to maintain and then we could accelerate the level of service, we're going to meet the needs that we continue to have as we grow. If we spend more money, I mean, it's fairly, you know, there's not. There's not a whole lot to it.
No, I mean, it, it's, it is, it is a fact. I mean, every time you pass a levy, the levy is obsolete the day you actually. Passed it, because expenditures are going to continue to grow, you're going to have. Now, the cost of, of labor is going to increase, the cost of equipment has just gone through the roof. I mean, that has been one of the worst. Pieces to the entire equation. I mean, when, when I first got here, what, what, we, we bought a fire truck at that point. What did we spend? Yeah, I was gonna say five fifty, that same fire truck today costs.
Right, exactly. We can't earn interest on money, we can't, we earn interest, we can't invest in it. So we earn like a modest amount of interest. So as the inflation continues to skyrocket.
Exactly.
Our money basically stays the same. And the same thing happens in people's personal accounts as they retire. Particularly over the last year or so, you see the stock market go like this, and the cost of everything go like that. It's very difficult to maintain levels of service, the equipment that you need, the staff and if you.
That's right. Well, and you know, the other thing I would, I would argue is that the state legislature doesn't help us out very much. When, you know, they require that we call a levy a permanent levy or, you know, uh, you know, continuing levy. When point of fact, that levy is, that, the, the revenue line is going to reach the expenditure line somewhere in the. In the future of that particular, uh, levy. And then the other thing is, is the, the, what the nature of. You know, the way, the way they do the taxation system in, in Ohio for the local governments. I mean, it doesn't allow for, to your point. Any growth in that, in, in that fund. So if we have additional houses that come online, you don't get additional revenue. But you still have additional responsibility. So, you know, you, you, you put in, you know, a hundred, a hundred new homes. You don't get, you know, revenue that's commensurate with a hundred new homes and the service for the police and the fire and the service department. You just get the same amount of money. And so that's, that's kind of the awkward balancing act. And I think that's, that's something we have to. You know, we know that the levy is going to have to happen, just a question of what date. We know that the levy for the police, the police, uh, department, that, that's going to have to happen, but. Yeah, but it's theirs.
The one that's incredible, which point. But that's very old levy, that's somebody company that goes back to. Combs or something, I mean, it's been around a very long time. You know, sure, it was for the department stretching out as long as they did, but it's, you know, and what I was saying, this is a sort of a great segue into. Getting into any of the development, but is that, and I think I talked, one you want to talk about this. This really deserves a separate one session where we talk about our levies and, and, and our references and. You know, how we want to do it strategically to, uh, bring it to the public's attention and what we want to do. But, uh, it clearly is, um, from the police who's been tired of the same thing, they're, they're running out, but the police is running out quickly.
So, uh, you see the steepness of the, uh, police and near fund balance there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Deep rocks, if you'd like to span on that. I mean, I just figured you may have something.
Well, I, I do give, uh, a lot of credit to Chief Bottom. Because, you know, he, he kept expenses that are pretty tight. However, I would all that. Uh, again, no sweat on him, but the department was lagging in equipment and technology. And, uh, personnel and training. So there is a cost with, associated with all this. And, uh. Unfortunately, I think, uh, it's, it was a root to, it's been a while since there has been a levy. And the time is going to eventually come where we have.
Well, and that said, there's a lot of. Detail that goes along with putting a levy on, on the ballot, you know, in, in. The way that process works. And so, you know, the discussion needs to be had now. Um, not tonight, but perhaps in, in the very, very near future about when, you know, what date. Do we think that this magical event is going to occur? And then work backwards about, about the mechanics of, of getting it done. Because, you know, we're going to have to have the, have the ballot language approved and put into, um, the, filed at the board of elections and. I think the auditor's office has a piece to play in this, and all of those pieces need to be moved. So I mean, it's like, if you want to be on a May ballot, then you need to have it in by X date. And if you want it in on a, on a November ballot, it has to be in by July. So those are, those are mechanics that I warn you, we have to have that ready to go. Sooner rather than later. So I mean, if twenty, if, if this is the year. Then, you know, we have to have something ready to rock and roll by, because you're not going to get it on, you're not going to be, I don't think you'll be able to get it on. For the May ballot, so you'd have to wait for, you know, there is no May ballot, it's a March one. In this year, so that's scrubbed.
And you have two resolutions.
Correct. That's, and so that's two months, two meetings that we'd have to, so there's, all of that needs to be. Played out, even, and, and again, it's just as important, all of those pieces as what is the levy going to be? How much is it going to be in order to achieve our goals, but still be able to be responsive to the, uh. To the public, and that's really the important part, the public. We, we obviously want to do the best we can do for the public, but there's a certain point where. We, we just have to be realistic about what we're asking.
So this sounds like it could be a three step special meeting process, we need to figure out. How much you need and actually Debbie and Claudia, Tim, you guys have all done pretty important with that. But I feel like we would need a meeting to drill down on that, and we would need a meeting kind of in terms of. How to go about that as far as village and another meeting kind of aside.
Well, not just that, but I think, I think you're, you're perfectly right, but a meeting to get the publics in. Cause I think.
Throw that in between, that it should be running sort of alongside of these meetings.
I mean, perhaps we even have a meeting out in the world, outside of these walls. Where we take it to the streets and say, this is what, this is what's happening, this is what we have to do.
But if we fail to move here.
What is, what is the basis of what we're supposed to do, right? We're supposed to do police. With, the public safety is what, is what we're supposed to be here and what we're supposed to do ultimately. And that's, it comes down to the police and fire, and if we do nothing. You're gonna, you're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to have twenty officers anymore, and you're not going to be able to replace cars, you're going to have to go the other way.
The sin of an action.
What's that?
The sin of an action.
Correct. It sounded like you said cinnamon action, I was like. I am.
So, but, I mean, could we consider going ahead with the special?
Absolutely. I, I think we don't have any choice. I mean, I think, I think that it's, we've come to the time when decisions have to be made, and I think we have to. We have to move forward, you know, there's no question about it, so.
That's kind of what happened when we were working on the fire let me believe this time with the cans. I mean, they were very done, uh, getting out there. And getting that job done.
Right. But I think we've got a lot to do in these walls before we start to go. You know, asking for a campaign committee to start pressing the, the, uh, the community. But I think you're absolutely right. I do think a special, additional special meeting, work session like this one. Yeah, yeah. Particularly, I mean, if we're, if we are thinking about trying to drive, it, it, it's always awkward to put it on the November ballot. Uh, but if we're driving toward that November ballot, I mean.
Well, we may have to stagger these as well, I don't know, conclusion we're going to come to, if we get the information that. Time should, could be more of the essence if we have to stagger. Consider that we, that sort of seemingly, you know. Some more pressing, you know.
Uh, so that, that's, I want to go to farming too. I mean, you've got everybody here, this will save you a company email and phone calls.
So I'm pretty comfortable until we get to the very end, like Daniel or British, whether that I think it will.
So maybe that week of the twenty second, somewhere in there. You want to do the twenty second? Monday?
Twenty second, um, I mean, five ish, five ish.
Two and two five, or do we want to do a little later?
Five thirty.
I don't think we can get, I, I want to, if we go earlier, then we lose the public, and I'd, I'd like to be able to. Make sure that the public can be here, at least they know that.
On the twenty second?
Oh, wait, again, I'm, I'm pushing to try to make it so that it's. The public, I would like to encourage the public to be here as we discuss this.
Well, that, that should apply to most of our meetings, really. I mean, most people work during the day and, you know, so that, that agree with that. Five thirty on the twenty second?
Now, I'll get a, you know, I'll get a message from my wife soon. Don't you remember that's the day? So we're doing.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, uh, the, the second party was.
Hold, hold on, just, just real quick, I just want to reel it back in. So the expectation for that meeting, what, what is it that we want to see at that meeting? So that Tim and the rest of the crew can, can prepare that efficiently. I think from my perspective, it's going to be dollars, and we're going to need to see what the, you know, again, those charts are fantastic. Um, and, and kind of a discussion of, of a deeper dive on what the date is that. We may see is the exact date for that. So that sort of thing is, is what I want to, want to make sure we drill further down. What do you guys want to make sure you see out of that, out of that meeting?
When, timing, you know, and as you said, money. I mean, those are the two important things, I think, getting that ball rolling. Once we have a date established, then we know with what, what kind of speed we have to move forward with. Other planning sessions and meetings. So Chief, if you come, you know, and Tim and Debbie come into the meeting and say, hey, look, you know, we think it's best time that this be on the November ballot, then. Then we can establish a timeline on, you know, how quickly we move along with, again, more meetings and other actions.
Yeah, I agree with it, of course. Yeah, I agree with the, of course, the the timing, so, you know, it's, these grant intersections are gonna be most important, types are gonna occur, and then how far out. From of that we have to get, and then I think the other component, it's sort of, you know, money timing. The other component might be that focus group, uh, sort of community outreach, maybe we get some sort of. You know, ball rolling on that as well, so that that's.
Yes, and the thoughts on that, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
You know, if we wanted to get it out in the community, the weather's not gonna be the greatest, one of the schools might be a good location. Where we could potentially hold, and if we don't want to do it here, where we could get out, like Mr. Freeman said, out into the community, the schools are a good place to do that.
Where we can sort of blame them for taking their tax hours. Or we're just trying to give you fire.
You good now?
I'm good now, fire away.
Uh, so the second party of the. Of the board was enhance the economic vitality of the communities and active economic development efforts. Leading to a robust and broad tax base that will support desired community services and facilities, again, all the underpinning of our public safety activities. Um, our our first sub goal was to prioritize development in industrialism properties in the township. And Eddie's gonna talk a lot about as we go through each one of these items, but it's been a very busy year, and I'll say, considering that. It's been a one man show, running about playing and economic development, he's did a very nice job with it, so. Yeah, I'll turn over the deal, just in terms of where we're at and which.
Yeah, so, uh, please feel free to interject that, I'll kind of give you a general overview, and then. Uh, we can get it in the weeds where we feel like it's necessary, but ultimately felt like we'd be getting our mark towards a twofold or one. Uh, just to kind of boil it down into a simple term, so maybe stay around one twenty five, basically nice, more powerful. A place where people wanted to go, now it's reiterating for land use process as well. The second item was to drive fund, and what basically the way staff kind of took that was, how do we activate sites? How do we diversify revenues, how do we get more revenue, whether it's grants or otherwise coming into the community? And so basically, there's four prompts in in the way that we address that, number one was through regulations. The first major thing, this, again, this is gonna be a lot of overlap into goal three, which is also. Who my department, in in the large part, uh, with crap in the land. That then guides all regulations that we deploy throughout the community, whether it's traditional nodes, what happened. So we've already, as a result of document twenty twenty three, rainstorm, which was a major objective under goal three, we've also begun. The tax amendments, which was another major objective, to de-emphasize. Uh, automobile automobile uses like store car, storage lots, car sales, mini storage and drive. So we've kind of de-emphasized all those reasons, we've upgraded our landscape regulations through the first batch of tax amendments as well. So regulations on the front end is kind of the main, main, main thrust there. The second part is enforcement of regulations that we have on books and the new regulations that have come out as well. What we've done is, we've continued our sign enforcement program, which is the sign signs, sticking the ground sign ball on the board. Uh, this year, we set a record, we've been tracking for three years, but this year we hit over hundred twenty signs that we just paid in the community, and we put John Feltzer in the back. We've taken down a number of non-performing more signs as well, the nodes is more, I'm sorry, so we get to, importantly, I think, I think next one is kind of touching on the red. See the red here, here we go, yeah. Uh, so non-performing signs like the large pole signs, free places that were built at a time when regulations were a little different. And so this by really enforcing the law and raise on the books. Uh, a number of those signs have come down, no, it's no added expense to the township, it's just a matter of straight enforcing the regulations that exist. This ties a little bit to some of the, uh, driving fund, we accumulated over forty, close to fifty thousand dollars in valuation funding value. Through this, the governor's budget, they had demo program, we applied, and that number of sites qualified through that program, so again. Getting new regs on the boats that reflect the vision of the community, but also acquiring funds that can help us better enforce. And start to spray a lot of the old kind of more or less decrepit components of the board have been major, major driving factors. Furthermore, we've also rehabilitated a major salvage yard, I don't name particular facilities or anything, because we don't wanna, not. We wanna be, we wanna work as partners with various businesses throughout the community, we don't wanna. Put people in the circumstance where their actual business would be at stake and understand if. Uh, it's, it's a difficult environment, you want people to continue operating productively, but we want to be within the bounds of the vision. Of the community and also the bounds of what's leading and permissible as well. The third component is the funding, so our department has driven as. Uh, applied for and secured a value of over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in grant funding this year, that includes a community, uh. What what amounts to a node studying through the C M U grant program. Which is really a great opportunity, and I'll give you more details as that goes along, but basically. Step one is deploy these nodes so that we have a regulatory framework, step two. Is through programs like C M U in-house or otherwise, and suddenly becomes available, is we develop an actual. Plan at the grassroots level for each of the different node areas, so the C M U grant, which is valued at over a hundred thousand dollars, is. There, we will have consultants coming in to evaluate the former newly developed area, and that know that it sits with them. And in addition to the regulatory we already have, will create, help create a vision, so that we will know exactly how everything will move in the future. And will reflect on our community, rather than as well. Uh, the fourth item that we've been working on is, it's basically the human capital aspect, we've initiated a, a goal to formalize more or less. A B R M E program, which is business retention and expansion, where we go to various different businesses, meet with them one on one. And trying to learn about. What their role is in the community, what kind of obstacles they have to grow, how we can help them grow, and how we can be a partner with them. Uh, one of the kind of. The strengths we have on that is basically just if if personnel staffing issue, you only have so many people in the department that can go out and aid in these relationships. We've been maintaining, uh, informal contacts as well, so we've also met, uh, with Mr. Schnee Munchen, who owns a munching site. We met with Mr. Kellerman, who owns Kellerman, uh, coach, who's a major employer of the community. And so we're continuing to get out there as aggressively as possible and build those relationships and build those contacts, so that. Uh, not not only that they can help us, but so we can help them and cooperate with them and know what their needs are. Uh, and the whole, the fifth item, which basically continues to circle back, is the revenue component, and so. One of the major objectives that we could go to research is the C is C I C, now. A constraint that we have on that is, of course, going to be funded, it it's breaking it on the books, but it would have to be funded. Uh, and so with one of those circumstances of if we invest in it, it's it's a way to invest in our future. Uh, but of course, we have public safety and a number of other. Uh, major, major concerns that I think that have to be balanced along with it, but. Part of the way that Administrator Williams and I have been looking at this is. How can we diversify our revenues, how can we look for ways to. Uh, not only play defense on a lot of these regulations in place, but how can we start playing offense? And the way to do that is through an economic development engine like a C I C, for instance, where we can. Take the target sites that were basically listed to our line of interest plan, and we can actually step forward and say, perhaps. There's a way for us to be a proactive member, or proactive in acquiring key sites, we develop key sites, and so. Right now, our revenue generation and diversification is. Boils down to pursuing grants, which we can continue to do with the capacity that we have, albeit at a fairly. Stable capacity, uh, and then, of course. Uh, deploying economic development tools that. Already already exist, things like the enterprise zones, things about that, the problem though is that. Those are tax based programs, and I think that what the board is signaling is, how can we diversify actual revenue streams and create new revenue streams? And so that is a major focus of ours, we're looking at undeveloped sites in the community, and. Who would be our E program, working with those partners to figure out ways to attract a digital commercial and industrial capacity. Now, that can be a long game, it's, uh. It sounds, it sounds great on paper, but it's gonna be taking a lot of black work, and that is something, though, that we are working through. For instance, with the wave five program for the bachelor site, so. Backyard site reached step two of the wave five program, where we created a site, a site selection criteria for the entire facility. And we're working through, and of course, we're at the point now where we now understand all of the constraints. But, uh, that helps in as much as we have funding to actually. Knock out those constraints, constraints such as sewer availability, natural gas and city deployment. So we'll continue to target sites that are perhaps, in addition to back toward lower hanging fruit, sites that might be better off, might have better options. For deploying a jet or other side types of revenue diversification matters, so that's kind of the overall overarching view, of course. Everything's always going to be, uh, limited by the amount of revenues and funding availability that we have in place. We're continuing to work through with existing grants that we have on the ground, we've also submitted through the art program, secure. Uh, close to thirty thousand dollars of our funding, uh, for the genuine trail connector program. Which would connect Stone Ridge to the downtown newly, uh, village, former village area. But we also have a, a trail design inquiry as we sit D consults for the US highway fifty two vicinity. Which again, that was no, there was no map whatsoever, C T has submitted our trail program at the back, the rest of the earth coming as well. So at worst, we're going to have trail, little active engineered designs, which we can have in-house, and we can pursue other grant. Grant funding programs for construction, should it comes out like you did. This particular program doesn't work out, so we have a lot of, uh, a lot of iron in the fire, so this we. So, uh, of course, it's remaining limited in in a certain way by that capacity. Economic, as we said, including some other, so it's targeting, targeting.
And one of the things that Eddie had a problem about, lot two, is having these discussions with the board in terms of. What level of flexibility staff can have, those were having discussions with people that want to invest in the community, maybe grow that investment. We have circumstances now where someone is willing to invest, the property is largely not, to actually grow the investment. But, you know, to what degree, you know, staff start talking about. How we can properly within a good program like C R A or so forth, um, to actually grow it, to grow the tax base, you know, beyond. Potentially a, a small development to to larger development. And I think that's, you know, one where we want the board to talk about that, and more, you know, to what degree that we, you know, staff that. Have the flexibility, having discussions, obviously, all of those are approved by the board ultimately, but. Uh, you know, are those things that can be discussed, this is part of our, you know, attempt to entice. People that are going to invest and actually can grow that investment.
And I can provide a just a tad of advice on that, it'll, the problem, it's all this common sense to to the board, but. Frequently, we'll have a number of conversations with ongoing developments or prospectus developers, for instance. And one of the limitations that we have is, for instance, in a perfect world, we have. X, Y, and Z allocated for an economic development budget, things that happen. And what, where we are right now is frequently, we'll have a conversation and say. There is, there is a certain demand for additional retail space, additional entertainment amenities, things of that effect that we hear from the community, or perhaps. Uh, urgent agreement, things of that, which we know for sure that there are definitely a market in existence. But when we have those conversations with developers. The the question inevitably arises, okay, sure, I can, I can get to a certain point, but. What can the township do to help us, and ultimately, of course, that's a question that we all would anticipate going to be asked, and. Our part of our professional perspective is, my professional perspective is, I'm not, I'm not here to just throw. Public funding, public dollars at a developer, right, it's a, it's a far more complicated conversation. But where we are right now is, staff is at a point where if if that conversation were to mature, we will be going before the board. And have, we would have to have special work sessions or various different sorts of other, uh, sessions in order to. Formalize those conversations, and. One way to be a little bit more nimble is if we have certainty in what the board comfortable level is in. Empowering staff for part of that conversation with the developer and a more advanced level, if that is something that that this board would comfortable with. Staff can come up with a bit of a formal proposal on, here are some of the obstacles that we see frequently, here's how we recognize the potential to. Addressing those matters, but right now, the conversation has to come to the hall if the developer says, okay, sure, I might be interested, but. What's it for me sort of thing, and then we would inevitably have a very, if that's an approach that the board prefers. That's totally fine, but ultimately, what we've seen in other, other jurisdictions is there may be an economic development line item or budget. Where each year, perhaps, there are set, there are set of goals where it's, you know, we we have high priority uses, we have high priority development types for job. Targets, for instance, where if you're going to be pursuing or addressing concrete, black and white targets. Then there's a way that staff can move forward a little bit more nimbly, or bring something that's a little bit more mature to the board, as opposed to. Bringing something that's a more immature sort of nebulous proposal from the developers, so. So that's just one of the things where we're, we're at a very early stage of trying to formalize the metrics, but. We have, we have a conversation, but it's just a matter of how far staff goes, they're limited.
Well. So, so first of all, I'm gonna tell you guys that I think you've done a great job with the resources and staffing specifically. That you have available to you, I think you've gone well above and beyond where most people would have expected you to go, um. As far as what what I would like to see, you know, would be to empower you to work at the top of your license or credentials. You know, I think you guys are the professionals, you, this is where your level of, this is where you've been educated and where your training is, so I think, you know, maybe you should. Think about, from my, my opinion again, proposing, you know, what kind of guardrails you'd like to see. You know, you guys know your business and, you know, we, we know our lines of business, and so, you know, we're paying your top, top, top dollar, right? To to give us good expert advice, and so I think what I would like to see is for you to make some recommendations based in part on your. Obviously, your training, your credentials, and what perhaps, you know, other communities have modeled, you know, before us, that have have been, where they've been very successful.
I think.
Get started. But to tie on a heading a little bit, I think there's been more of our roles colliding the last year, but never came around, and I, I've been here for a few years. Um, dealing with gross cups calendars, and one of the things that we're, we're starting to encounter is. Areas of our township. That nobody ever dreamed of, or or a lot of. Could develop, will develop, and now we're running into some situations where, you know, a family farm that sat for years was now divided, but still a lot of. And when you start looking at, and something simple to manage, you know, in their world, it's time to manage. So we work really, really closely together, um. It's not just a number and why the address is what for us or for police, of, you know, making sure manners is fall in line. That we're not skipping around, and we're finding a lot of parts of this township, you know, and household managers, we've got parts that. That they could fix, some that still need some work, or Andrew's job, but trying to set that back or leaving root for those other parcels and those. Those other areas that doesn't hamper. Public safety, responding to emergency service departments, responding to a need, and so that's one of the challenges we're really working through, and. And I think there's been way more discussion on fireworks, anything that comes to. Subdivision plans and proposals, stability, that we've never had before. You know, it's, it's constantly Jim walking down the hallway, Eddie coming down the hallway, hey, what do you guys think about this, how does this? How's this working here, or is it B D U, what, and they've actually, you know, Eddie and Andrew have really taken the time to understand. Our perspective, why it doesn't work for us, why we do it a certain way, and we've tried to help. Show them that, they've done a really good job of showing, demonstrating to us why. In their world, something is a certain way, just trying to make those two work. Has been a bit of a challenge, and I think some things that none of us really thought about becoming an issue, but as we continue to experience growth. If you drive around the town, if you see signs on all the places, or a park, and they'll, things are gonna continue to be a challenge for us to walk through.
But you're doing it, and that speaks to the fact that you guys are quality people and are willing to do that, and not necessarily, you know, fragmenting your, your. And not necessarily, you know, fragmenting your your responsibilities. You guys are obviously working collaboratively and I think that's going to make this engine, you know, run that much more smoothly. So I think we've got good. You know, very well trained, very, you know, collaborative people in key positions and. You know, if you guys keep doing what you're doing, I think, you know, we're on the right track.
I think. The one thing that can, that will always concern me is that in economic development for our community. You need to be focused in on return on investment. And that has to be job number one. Um, as far as my concern, I think it's a great idea, you know, kick out some some thoughts on guardrails. I think that's wonderful. But I do think that the board needs to be involved. Heavily in this discussion, um. Because it, you know, what happens if we wind up with a project that we don't really want? And you guys have done all this work and drilled into it and and we vote no later. So. You know, I think that's something that's important. You don't wanna, you don't wanna get yourself out on limb too far. As far as a lot of the ec- the economic development tools, financial tools. I would feel a lot better if we had a CIC in place. So we have some people to provide additional input to you guys. Um, as we, as you start to filter through a project. Um, you know, CIC would would be able to create a board that you could bounce issues off of and ideas off of and. And work through before it gets to the board level. Um, that's what a lot of CICs have done short of investment. So that's, those are a couple of things that I would recommend that you really focus in on. The one, there's one thing in here that. Uh, I noticed the trustees will adopt zero out one twenty-five quarter plan. We haven't done that. And we need to do that. Um, we need to kick the tires on that, make sure it's still relevant. I think probably is because it was basic. But um, but I think that's something that needs to, needs to be really focused on. So I think on economic development, I think it would be very helpful to you. To to do some sort of a CIC and get that in place. So you've got, you know, addition, as you said, force multiplier. If you're able to get somebody in here to help with, you know, big brain thinking to help you pull together financial plans and. And and how do you, how do you, how do you drive that? Is it going to be a TIF? Is it going to be a CRA? Is it going to be a mixture of a TIF, jet and CRA? I mean, those are very complex. You know, equations that I'm not sure that we're ready to do just yet. You know, so there, that's something that that very much concerns me. Um, as we move forward and that communication between the board, particularly board members that know something about that. Um, has been lacking. And I think that's something that needs to be focused in on. So, which is something that I offer. You know, it's a two-way street and I'll I'll step down that street.
So I'll give you your third set of criteria if you're not already confused enough. Uh, we have a land use plan, put a lot of effort in that, put a lot of effort and get a community feedback. So my opinion would be sort of perhaps oversimplistic, but. Take the plan and if somebody's looking to develop on a certain site, you offer your services. To explain to them. The plan, right? To show them where they're at, as far as where they're thinking about developing. What are some of the uses that the board and the community and everybody else, you spent so much time vetting all this stuff through expects to see? And then you could tell them, here are some tools. If you're within one of these uses. Here is generally some tools that may be available to you. And I would think that the trustees, if they're on board and sort of in line with the wishes of the community. Would be likely to, you know, sort of commit to, whether that be, uh, you know, a tax abatement or something perhaps. Get a restaurant up on one twenty-five, whatever it might be. I think that provides a pretty like um, objective criteria for people because we put a lot of effort in that and they could kind of. At least see if it's worth their time or not worth their time, right? If they're gonna put like a, you know, high density apartment complex. Um, and a property off of a ten mile, um, sort of budding up to the golf course on one side and up to legendary run community on the other. They're pretty, you could show them the land use plan and say, hey, you know, here's, here's what's going on. Here's sort of the expectation. So. You can go ahead and submit plans and go through all that, but it might be a poor use of your time. Whereas, you know, if there's something else that's more desirable. And then from the CRC perspective, that's where I would say, so I I my. My opinion would be staff has, this is my opinion, one of three. But staff has full, you know, go at it. Show them the land use plan, explain it to them. It's a document. We have it for a reason. And then explain to them some of the resources that may be available to them. If they're in nodes and and doing things that are consistent with what the land use plan sort of wants to see. I see no, zero issue with that. Um, as far as the CRC, our our C, I I see that as a, as a potentially. Um, advantageous tool, but I would like to hogtie it like you've never seen a, 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 a. A group hogtie, uh, because uh, I think the filtering process is what's most important. So they come through the filter. They come through a well-vetted. Uh, land use plan, they come through a zoning commit, uh, commission who is hopefully sort of involved with that because there were several commit. Members of that on the land use plan committee. So hopefully that's all sort of continuous or within flow. And then it comes to us. And if it makes it through all three, hopefully out the other end, we end up with desirable development for our community that's consistent with what residents would expect to see. With the CRC, you just want to make sure that uh. As far as what they can do is is sort of counterbalanced, I would say. So I I would, my vote would be if we, if we were to do something like that or my thought would be. That you you may want to limit the 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 people from our board that are on this, that, or maybe have none of them on that. And have sort of a, you know, a really laborious process to go through. Um, any kind of our spending of taxpayer dollars on anything like that. If it's not vetted through um, uh, disjointed. Um, groups. So, you know, you want a group that's completely separate from the trustees and you want the trustees. And you potentially want staff. And if it passes through all three entities, it gets approved and it's cumbersome and it takes a while. But it kind of limits, uh, i- i- it definitely sort of uh, like. Uh, keeps you from irresponsibly spending the taxpayer dollar more or less because otherwise, you know, we all. Are obviously brilliant, uh, but if somebody were to come in after us, that weren't so much so, or. You know, somebody after Eddie and you get a um, a a group of idiots in here. You could real, have a real mess on your hands if you don't have proper checks and balances on that. Whereas. If if you have everything sort of separate and you have to pass through three different entities, you could have a planning and and zoning guy. Who's really not very good. Let's just say Eddie's excellent, but you could have somebody the opposite of Eddie. And it could pass through Eddie, but it's not going to get any further. Or you could have a board that's a total group of morons. And it gets through Eddie or, you know, you know what I mean? You'd have a, you'd sort of have a, and that's what I would like to see out of a CRC because I've I've seen it otherwise and it's not a.
And I totally agree with that. I think that you you do, if you're gonna do a CIC, it needs to be. Well regulated and the expectations have to be laid out. I don't think you can not have a trustee. I think it's required. In law that there's, it's one person from this board. Could be, I think fiscal officer can can serve in that capacity, but the one person leads board. Uh, is required to be on that. And then the community, um, you can set up up to five numbers on the CRC IC. And that could be somebody from the land use plan group or somebody from, you know, those those are required are. The expectation is that someone from the community will be part of that board. Um, that the CIC is is created under. So, you know, you you can restrict those as far as you want. And I wouldn't want to see. There are other communities that, as you pointed out, there's just no, there's no governor on those. They just. They they're going full bore. And, you know, they've gotten communities into a lot of trouble, but I think. To be able to help these guys out, having that CIC where you can kick the tires on a plan and and say, well, from my perspective as a developer, my perspective as a. As a uh, public finance person. That gives these guys additional tools to evaluate the plan and evaluate a tech, potential economic development. Site. But I will tell you that, um, and I and I agree with you on the other piece as well. And the idea that. We have the land use plan. I think that's the way this is working right now. You have the land use plan. Someone comes in and they say. I'd like to to develop, you know, a hog farm on, you know, on a ten mile road. You, I think it's already working that way right now, but what they're asking for is additional tools. So they could speed up and bring, I think that's what you're asking for.
Well, and that's of course, it is, it needs to be aligned with your vision. So, so of course. What what I'm stating is, we're going through, there's, there are four blocks, one, two, and three. One hundred percent full bore going over a hundred mile and a half. But ultimately, item four is the diversification of revenue and. Knowing, knowing that beyond the boundary, right? There are tools available. If you don't want the tools used. We're here to work on your behalf. But I would say, you know, there are, there are approaches to aggressively target properties. And the best way, of course, to control development or guide development the way they even want to see it is if you have sites. And so that's the only reason we bring it up, but of course. If if as far as everything else, the way that it's functioning.
Well, to sort of caveat what I said, I'm I'm fine with the tools. But there's a spectrum of how well something fits into our land use plan. And if that just fits like a glove and that use in that particular spot. Have that, you know, I I think there's a high likelihood that the board will be. No pun intended, on board with it, right? We'll be in lockstep with everybody else in the land use plan, everything else. So I would say. You know, personally, you know. Educate them on those tools, make them aware of those tools. Uh, if they're fitting really well in a particular use within the township.
But I, to to be sympathetic to what they're, they're asking. There is a particular site that I can think of right off the top of my head that is extremely complex. And. I- i- it's going to take a lot of. Skill to to be able to to pull it around to make it into a positive economic development. And and so giving these guys additional tools, additional. Brains to to try to to bounce issues off of. I I I think it only be beneficial. Now, can those be achieved by talking to the county? Probably, you know, can we get around that? I think Eddie, you did a fantastic job with um, with the, with the, the, the stonehouse restaurant. Trying to put together that that financial package and that worked out really well because. You know, we weren't, we weren't out any revenue. We actually were, were positive revenue through that whole thing. So. Um, so I think there's, at the moment, I don't know that we need a S- a CIC to speed things along. But I do think having a real healthy debate about it. Um, because I know you have, you've had historically, you've had some reservations about it. And I think they're, 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 they're valid and legitimate. But I think right now, I don't know, I I don't know how, I mean, I'm I'm a little uncomfortable with just giving you a card. So, so are we answering your question?
Yeah, I mean, so they're, so to be sure, though, they're welcome to look at that. Show the land use plan committee to a potential, or the land use planner, potential developer. And if they're fitting like a glove within that land use plan, but then go ahead and explain some. Uh, you know, uh, potential additional tools that could be available to that developer that would of course require board approval. But to go ahead and say, hey, you know, you're fitting really well into this particular use.
What I'm worried about is when it doesn't. And 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 a lot of economic development does not fit. Comfortably into the glove. And that's, that's something that we're gonna have. I mean, it's, it's just.
Well, I think that's what you gave Eddie, the certain, the development issue is those guardrails are things that he can develop. And then go to you all, you can hash it all out. We can have these discussions and say, you know, these are kill, what's a man using land and these are things where. We really want you to work and spend time in in on those. But no, that's not something, you know, we. Got enough tax abaters, we don't want another one. That's one that you, you know, you might not want to turn loose on and have any further discussions. And so I think that's what I heard is that that's the type of thing that we can run to you and say, you know. What are these things that are really worrying issues for the community that the land use plan has said and you all as legislative want for our community? And then that gives him a little bit more will, ability to at least have some additional discussions. But if you're absolutely right. Maybe that whatever is formulated is is gonna have to come back to the board, but just nothing is gonna happen. It's CRA or it's EZ or whatever it may be without a board signing off on it. I don't think Eddie necessarily want to waste a lot of time on something. And, you know, this is just a process to where he feels a little more confident that he's working on it. And when he can finally get it in that flat hole and it's, you know, it's within those guidelines and it's not something where he's just still. Yeah, that's spot on. And it's like, you know, if, for instance, we're from the community saying, hey, we love to have a sit-down restaurant. Well, if if we go through the effort to reach out and aggressively maybe, you know, go visit them, visit the facility that exists somewhere else or something. And we have a conversation. We we have some level of certainty where we know that we've worked with you guys and that we're actually reflecting exactly what you're saying, which is sure. You know, if they need, you know, if they have an utility issue or an infrastructure item or something like that, we might be, we may have certainty on. Our internal goals and policies and objectives. The land use plan definitely delineates. These types of uses are definitely on pursuit X, Y, and Z. But it, and as Mr. Gray was indicating. There's more nuance than just that, right? So to get to the point where. A a particular development will have its own constraints or barriers to overcome. And if we have those conversations to go through the whole process, we want to be able to know that we've had a conversation with you guys personally, we're operating on an annual basis. Under free or true premises where we know, okay, you know, we can help with infrastructure or we can bring that to the board and the board's not going to even say. We're not.
Exactly. So I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, yes, if it fits like a glove. Allow them, make them aware of these potential, um, you know, benefits that they could have. And make sure that they are, they understand that that is a, a, um. Maybe not probable, but it's a potentially uh, good outcome. Don't make promises. But you know, and then just make them aware of them and know that they're gonna have to come for board approval. And if it fits like a glove and in the land use plan, chances are. We may be willing, but if, you know, if it's, it's like a tax abatement or something like that, you know, and they come to the board and we said, no. It's not something we, we want to do. That is what it is. I mean, that, there's no. It's not a hundred percent guarantee, but I think you're welcome to discuss some of those tools with a potential. Developer if it's fit within the use of our, of our land use.
And you can always bring. To follow along on that path, you can always bring this up in executive session and and as you're having that discussion. You know, we could perhaps, you know, put that on our monthly agenda. You know, some others and then we could, we could just scoot into an executive session and discuss. You know, details and get our, get our opinion and. Thoughts. Just to be clear, the CIC, anything the CIC brings and considers has to come back to the board.
Yeah, I was saying, I like a community reinvestment, uh. CRA maybe? I meant, I meant CRAs, community reinvestment area, different tools like that, like a tax abatement and stuff like that. You say, hey, you're on one twenty-five. Your restaurant, everybody wants to see that in another sit-down restaurant on one twenty-five. These are some tools that are likely to be available to you. Um, you know, and so they're aware of that. So that might entice them. They pursue more with development. Of course, it has to come back to us for approval.
Right. Most of the savvy developers already know what's available to them. And developers are 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 interesting because, you know, they want to pass that risk off to. Their investment risk they pass off to us. And so they already know, they asked the question, can you help them? They know what they don't.
Yeah, but they want to know how stupid we are. So how quick are we uh, willing to sign off on that? Uh, and so Eddie can help sort of filter that at least from an initial stage. So that we don't end up with a bunch of disjointed, um, you know, inconsistent type of expectations from our board to our zoning commission. To our land use plan like we've had before. We've had people coming in, developers with an expectation that something's gonna get approved.
Cause it's already got.
And it's gotten through one level and it's gotten through a second level and it comes to us. And we have to say, you know, I feel like personally, I have to say, sorry, it's not consistent with what the residents and what the community kind of wants to see. But I do think that we are getting things definitely more lockstep. We're getting things more in alignment. As to sort of the land use plan, the zoning commission. And I would see no issue with Eddie having initial discussions as long as they're consistent with that land use plan.
Yeah, I think he's doing that now. I think what you're looking for is that, as you said, the the fourth step, the process. How far can he go with discussing potential finance? You know, filling, when when they look at the pro forma on a project, how how far could he go? With regard to discussion about how.
Target, for example, it's a high value target and they've got an infrastructure issue that is going to make it very difficult, but it's high value for us. And it's an underperforming piece of property as it is right now, it's low value. And they need extra, thirty thousand, whatever the number may be, you know, and so. And and staff have those initial discussions. They're not saying we want to do it, we're just saying, okay, what's the number that you need? What are the tools and measures we can go about doing that? And what's going to be the long-term payoff to the township? For raising the overall valuableness and for the services that the community wants going to be deployed in this particular development. And I think that's basically what he's saying here is that, you know, I just, he has sent that additional step. You're certainly not. Creating, you know, a situation that we've seen in other communities, um, where. He's wanting to show how he's basically making promises that developers, all he's been doing is being will take the next step in the conversation. Um, so that when it comes to the board, it's fully developed. And we we can say, here's the whole thing, here's the numbers on it, and here's what the potential expectation would be. To make it all work and put them into development. So then you can look at it and say, no, it doesn't make sense, or no, we need to tweak something, go back to.
Well, having said said that, let's go back to what we what was said. An hour ago. It seems. And just say, write up a proposal in in the guardrails, um, and, you know, let us.
I would say a hundred percent, hundred percent. We've got staffing for a reason. Hundred percent have a discussion. Hundred percent, go ahead and let them know what tools are available to them. Go ahead and let them know if they're fitting like a glove and in a certain aspect of our land use plan. You guys are. Are really competent, intelligent people, and I feel like we've put a lot of effort into. This land use plan as well, and I have zero issue with that. It's all gonna have to filter back through us anyway. Um, and I think you guys also done a good job, at least with me personally. But of 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 communicating those things with us pretty early on. So I don't think there's any like projects that I haven't been. Aware of, you know, a- after sort of the initial contact. So you've done a good job taking the temperature of the room and. Sort of, you know, I I feel like we've made leaps and bounds progress with as far as not stringing developers along and sort of letting them know where we stand.
But but having said that, I I I it sounds like there may be some additional tools they'd like to see. To make their work a little more efficient. So. Let me just write it up and.
You know, adding minutes was for a long time. I think that a lot of early small ones. Can start leading to some some larger ones down the road that don't require. Maybe in a lot of circumstances, prompt the thought, but. Sometimes they get that not crying, you gotta have some some early means easy or small. And the commitments are small, but it starts to build a little on them and, you know, seeing that in other communities. I think that's really what Eddie has gone super hard on. And with a lot of stuff that we've all considered to be fairly small, but in the end all it's up, right? And it it sets a stage for that moment that we're trying to be able to redevelop. So I I think that's the problem.
Well, absolutely. Are you clear clear as mud at this point?
Eddie's gotten some pretty good feedback. I mean, I I think it's it is.
Well, so they don't have to draw up a freaking site plan to have these initial discussions, right? I mean, these discussions can be had or are we? Okay.
So so Eddie, Mike, I want to be sure, you know, they're telling us with it, I think you should go down. Maybe some very bold suggestions. You know, don't hold back, you know, you know, as I said before, you guys are professionals, it's your area of dreams. I don't think it's our role to micromanage you. It's like we don't micromanage the chief by writing his department. And send a little bit of cheap rocks to a job, you know, you guys know what you're doing, it's your baby. So make some bold suggestions. Bring it to us and tell us how you how you want to be empowered, because from what I'm seeing over the last year. There's definitely, you know, not that kind of this rhetoric of that, but I think you guys have really, you know, moved this forward in a direction that I think is. Is great and it almost lightens you in any respect, something I didn't I didn't feel prior to to um. The last year, so, you know, clearly there's something, right? So all it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll roll along a little quicker now. So part three was same quality of life in this township. By showing redevelopment or redevelopment, it it adheres to the qualities of the code. We have a call, it's only coded protects and enhances the public's health, safety as well there. Um, the first item on there, a big check mark, and that is complete and bottom land use plan. Um, I think that that was a fantastic job. I'll get to there as soon as Eddie or spearhead exam and got into the entire process because. The quality that we've gotten for the last staff is pretty amazing compared to some other places that I work where we had more staff. Um, and there are some things in there that we need to to follow up on, and we had some questions on some of that. Um, metal canvas. Now, that's almost moving on because now it's been it's been deregulated into period. Bit of vote in the public. Uh, you you mean, right now, we have a current situation where I think we have a more important on any canvas facilities, correct? And so is there anything more to do different with that than on my example perspective, right?
I'd say wait and see. I think the jury's at us fresh. And so I think we had to give it some work to bring it for a while and get it. So yeah, how how long are we uh?
But we're actually legally beyond where we should be on.
Uh, that's something that requires an additional section then to extend it.
Yeah, we probably should have extended.
Not to not to tack on a legal fee, I won't put Mr. News on this, but I think that an interpretation, I I know that. I think the the recent regulations came into effect in January first. And I think that what again, these guardrails is a good example of this. What what we can and cannot regulate, I think is we need a little clarification, although I think that we can draw our research out of it. But it seemed like a pretty sticky subject, to be honest.
Well, that's absolutely right. I mean, what we can and cannot do, one thing I think we still can do. Is say where things can go. Um, inside of our community and I think that should be done with your ass. So saying, you know, continuing with, and I think, didn't we put? Didn't we didn't we um actually put some zoning um language that? That sort of use needs to be in the commercial section of the township, so it's.
It would likely be covered in retail as as any other retail shop would be, it should be in our approach to those.
And so I think that's, I think that's something that we that we should make sure that that's. Speaking of guardrails, that that's, you know, still in effect.
Yeah, our our little council did mention that she has worked with some other communities on drafting. Some of this, so it could be that that's something that will cost us a whole lot of money because most of the evidence is already been done. So certainly we can get that going through Eddie and then we'll see how you feel about some of these new. Regulations that are going to provide advice to respond to it. And we'll go there, keep it on our way, our screen. Another item we had was solar farms. Um, just to see if that's something that we are still wanting to move towards. I think that Eddie even. Maybe ask if we order, if we get music consultant for that and try to get it moving to mom at this point. Just want to confirm that that's something we. You're okay, but we still want to have little regulations twice, um, and we'll make sure that they get down. Or not to, really not to be progress, last, at your last meeting, advise that to go to go forward. Future a set of regulatory, uh, set set of regulations actually are solar farm.
And didn't we sign on the counties, uh, some kind of agreement early, still except for area, I think, or we did that consideration of fifty?
We did not, did not. And there were seven, seven townships that did. Um, yeah, I don't think they knew team, I don't think the new township, Miami township. Well, Pierce some trips about them.
So we're not as.
If your language is such that only if it's property that cannot be used for any other productive purpose. Which will be very modest. This is a problem in the township, so you very much.
I think I think they're pretty tight. I think our language is pretty tight, um, and ineffective.
I think that the county does not like a climate that is submitted in. So that's that's probably the, you know, just in full disclosure, I think that for me, I don't want to.
To what extent?
I I the reason why I brought the. The solar farm and windmill stuff to you guys because we want to be an air tight and zero of the reasons possible. I don't like the idea that. You know, theoretically, we don't control our destiny where the county can. Practically have video authority on the way that this is all written. And so that's the reason why we're moving more with the R P. You just say. We'll get it in the format that you want, and whatever those, all that maybe really is going to be, what consultant's gonna come in and just. Make the thing that's a lot.
We don't address move forms at all.
That's said, that is a loop. We probably need to close them.
And and so ultimately, we did, we did put ranks together and everything, but I we staff was not super comfortable with the fact that county came back and said, yeah, this is fine. But X, Y, and Z, I'd rather you'd rather it just be. All right, clean it up.
Yeah. Um, a few more of the honorable lists. One, Eddie and I kind of go back and forth on it. Um, we had mentioned at one time, um, you're still saying short term rentals and whether what you wanted to put a little bit of. Girl rail seems to be the the awful worst for the night. Put a little bit of guardrails around that, I don't think he done or not. And and I think the question came up, um, the question that came up. Is that something we just want to deal with if the problem arises or is it something where we want to continue moving forward at staff? And try and create some regulations, um, you know, and and where they'll say copying is the best one in slavery, there's plenty of. Great regulations out there that we could certainly, uh, you know, copy and paste to to bring in community, but if it's not a high priority, then. Certainly, we can just pull back on that one and wait and see if there's a, you know, some a problem that comes up, then we have to respond to it.
Well, our sort of our land use plan, I think, sort of is guiding us in that way, too. I don't think the public wants that, I could think, generally speaking. So, you know, I would favor kind of moving somewhat forward than to craft something formal. Yeah, so the help helpful thing for us is to know to know what to bring you guys would be. If you want to see more air D U Vs and be more permissive, then we go here. If you want to be super prohibitive. Let's be prohibitive. And if we kind of have, I I feel like we may have a unanimous feel for that, but our regulations right now are fairly repetitive. It's it's pretty difficult and people want to get keep the language and say air D U V are better. The fact like our our regulations are pretty tight the way that we enforce them, but.
We talked about this. Yeah, we talked about this.
Yeah, this, I think we, uh, I can't tell if they're saying something or not.
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, stick with my 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 opinion, stick with us.
More restricted.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
My my concern was, I think Eddie's right, we could sort of initially go to battle, but I know I got a legal opinion in my last. Job that we had to be a little more attentive because there had been some court cases. In in other s- circuits, not in the six six, or is this this circuit, I guess, what what are we? I can't remember. Whatever the the but there there had been a few other of those court cases that come up and they had gone a little bit away from the community because. A lack of having a robust set of. But it's only kind of.
I'm not the only one.
We're gonna, so we'll 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 keep, we'll keep that on our list. It sounds like that, you know, we'll see if we can get that to complete it, um. And then Eddie, I don't know, there's some others related to beyond.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to hit on, I think this this has come up indirectly at a number of meetings, probably. So so as far as priorities with all of these tax amendments. If we could get a little bit of guidance from you guys, because I know that this ties into honestly for the very first goal of public safety and so forth, so. As far as where where you want our energy, kind of, you know, where you want us to kind of focus our energy, if that is a high priority, I think. My kind of initial intention was that that seemed like something where we brought a text amendment or new regulations to you guys, that. My feel was that would probably be really nice.
We've been doing a pair.
We've had, we've been doing that, like you suggested to some thought was a lot from like that. So I think the assignment, other thing you can eliminate, so I don't know if you want to change course on that. I think what you've done is a perfectly no job, so. Oh, so when I say priorities, I just mean, um, the property maintenance base.
Yeah, we're moving in the direction and cleaning things up. Yeah, and I and I I agree with you, but I think this tool, having it in place. Would be more efficient for that. We give it, we give it that lighting rod instead of. This looping process that goes through, you know, we're doing the nuisance ordinance. That nuisance ordinance is usually a pain. That process that we have to go through and cannot, we've said it before, it it's really. That process is really more of a. Bandaid approach, right? We're we're holding things together, trying to make it work. Whereas this would give us tool insight that we wouldn't have to spend so much on legal fees to get the nuisance ordinance approach. We could just hit it and define.
I'm about that, isn't it? I think the property maintenance thing, uh, required actually of us more specifically to define. What property maintenance needs, so actually it will be more fair that we can. They are not, you know, you're you're less likely to be targeted by someone. Subjective, obscure, whereas this is gonna be pretty. From.
And I hop back to what what we went through with bottom green. You know, all of the the imaginations we had to get through. Uh, for all the green and. This would have, you know, it would have been cool, we could have gone straight to them and just nailed them as they were having. Uh, zoning code issues instead of just sending them the letters and you better fix it or we're gonna do something. This would be a lighter to allow to to say, here's a five hundred dollar fine today. And we're gonna keep coming back every day and you don't fix it. I think that would be much. For fixing things like that up. Perhaps we wouldn't do that on the green, then we have two. That they would have known, uh, where they split.
Yeah.
Prior to what she said.
Yeah, the way it works right now, it's it's this nebulous gauntlet of nuisance, right? Property maintenance goes literally go and say, you have five. And the nation and just. Line by line, so we'll we'll make that a top priority.
I think I would I would also try to add, try to. Maybe that is a separate line item. Really digging into, um, home rule and whether or not that's something you should pursue, because that too can give us some more tools inside of. Our zoning planning toolbox.
That's what my major, we had discussed that, you brought that up well back actually. But can we, we're not on the township, that the problem, so.
By any example, you can, but we can get it definitive.
We're 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 kind of in between because we're almost a limited one for township. And and so, um, I think we decided based on that, on that term. But what a good point, what a good point to bring to. I think those two items do give you, you know, a lot more power. A lot more ability than they can, than they can back. It's it's very slow now when we have to address one of these maintenance issue. Property maintenance issues because it generally goes to the court. And it's very slow and it can be very costly from a part of legal perspective. Of that and pursue those, so that would make the job much easier, but again, with the limited tools we've had. Again, kudos to Andrew and to Eddie to be able to pursue those. I know I've been a pest a few times on a few of those items, but, you know, I I think that we've made progress. Um, if the way as anything else related to, um, zone issues, um, in in overall planning. Uh, the last is to provide a priority four goal, provide quality green space and recreational opportunities for the residents of this township. Um, there were a few sub goals that we developed with that. Um, one was evaluate parks master plan recommendations. Um, and considering our funding, I E, uh, some of the things they're recommending that we improve, that we improve in our parks system. But obviously, we have various administrative resources to be able to pay for that at this point. Uh, so I think some of the ground opportunities that we've been able to pursue and hopefully continue to pursue, they can. Help with some of those situations that I put the cabinet brand bill on that application, feel the memorial. You know, for our veterans and public safety officials, it's fantastic and. And by the way, we'll get another, um, million out there, we'll go on shelter, we'll go along with it, we really need this part. So creative thinking like that hopefully could help to, um, include some of the similar with the facilities out there, um. Uh, the other was that to order product, you know, looking at our parks and looking at, um, where our constraints are. In terms of being able to maintain those, um, with limited staff and so forth. Um, what the standards of maintenance that may be desired versus what we can actually deliver. Um, I don't know if there's going to be a particular solution to that study, but I know that I was tasked with doing that. By the board, I have not got to that. That's one of the other steps to so far, but just not enough mind guide to. But but I but I certainly hope to do that, you know, John, they they and I will be able to sit down and go through that. Um, the I I another sub goal was improved support for coordination in township's parking through the space committee. Uh, I did have a great meeting, uh, early twenty twenty three, uh, with Mr. Bressey. Just sort of talk about what our capacities, what we could do, what we couldn't do, uh, to support, you know, their programming, both from a financial standpoint. Um, just as well as, um, staff wise. I I will say that with this reorganization of staff, what we're going to be bringing on a part time basis, I do think that we're going to be able to provide. The parks committee more support on some of their special, and it's just in coordination. Uh, because a lot of coordination has to take place now, um, from. Um, from the plus individual members to Greg or to John or to Chief Ross, I mean, it it's. It it's a big compliment and I think having them take that off their plate to where they can just basically say, hey, we need this, this, this. Um, and kind of give a list to Chief Ross, and I think it might make it a whole lot easier to. And he can put us in more wheel of style and, you know, more pressing issues. So I think that would be an ultimate support to the progress department. And I, the last thing that I noted here is that we got through, uh, we got through the parks renovation. Uh, and I think the, uh, the final output, again, not an easy task, but the final end is. I go Carlos fantastic, not only from a contractor, but also John and staff and the things that he did additionally. The help over there, um, and also things that he did at Prince Chaff, even though that was part of the project, he did some things there. Help clean up and make it look nice. You know, we're seeing what we have over here. Uh, the one thing that I'll mention on the park over here is that. An item that will be lingered in in general probably agree, we can, it's not pressing to where it has to be done in twenty twenty four. But the the test court at some point, the service will happen and dealt with. Um, so that's something to keep on your radar stream that, you know, I think that as the cracks grow. Um, and we get a little water penetration if we need to, the subsurface and stuff, well, we're going to start having issues and that. So just something to put on the radar stream. You know, absolutely, we will then do a mission. It's not an inexpensive. Uh, task, but it's just if we're going to make it testable, it's a tournament to pick a ball once, we will have to service.
There's already pick a ball course laid out, which you're aware, everybody was talking about need pick a ball course. There is pick a ball course there.
That's sad.
Why aren't there much to do about it?
We got plenty of test platters, I'll see them up there all the time. I'll see maybe pick a ball.
Because I've heard of ten day towns just pick a ball.
Well, I think there's also, we've been mentioning around the size of the football court, um, in their area, but frankly. That's generally with the houses that are around. Bullseye around generally use that particular car. So about.
In the mornings, we do see. Quite a few people using this pick a ball. It's. There is a group of people that they were busting about. Eight years ago. And the man is not going to be long like that, but I believe they're still using.
I think the ball court is easy. So like I said, I'm playing figure ball, chasing my ball, I'm trying to get it to his head.
In my guess, if you need a township in the same way, those are pretty crap, they can buy it. They probably have programs with all those, they have leagues and other things, and we just don't have the capacity to be able to to run those, you know, in the township, so.
But we've definitely think about that pre-service.
It's, yeah, you're not abandoning a tennis court slash pick a ball for you at some point, you're not having to serve. So because it's, the the cracks are only going to get bigger, it's going to get smaller. And now we've invested a lot of money in fencing around it, so, um, we're probably you think about the the that at some point, maybe. The twenty twenty five, I did perhaps we could try getting some money there. And that would be, you could even use, I guess, Mr. Brown, you could use the, uh, the professional tenant line for this that.
I don't know, I went to Brendan, Brendan just turned me down for the first time ever. I don't know, I felt confident.
I think I ever, whatever we do, I like all of that. Model neighborhoods, you know, these parks with very little, if like just best of, um, parts for a long years and so forth. These are tremendous outputs. They gave advantage, they had a chance to get that show that on both of those.
Probably speaking, Sean, I'm. Sorry about, are you going to do something with on the radio? Sort of showing this radio rounds we thought about.
You mean as we are, you?
Yeah, you can do a reservation. Then it'd be relevant to that, I think it was showing data. It's thought about, possibly more developed. Decreased radio. I don't know, hundred fifty, eighty or run, something. I think it's worth serving on that. And it's not, it's not.
There's a good comeback by this and not like saying, well, it sounds like, you know, maybe many hours.
You can put it down to you.
One thing I wanted to share, I think I I told you guys, um, on the state cap land that. Eddie worked on, did, which I've been a great job with, one of those components is something that we've talked about. Several times over the years about the trails in our parks and the lack of marking and the lack of. Uh, means for us to find somebody that's lost or whatever. So that was a component of that grant to to properly develop a marking system for the trails and talking with John and how we identify those. Um, then it kind of spurred subsequent discussion of, you know, the maps that we have for them or what we have. Some of them are completely accurate to what's depicted or as things have changed and so working with county G I S, Kelly Perry. That rocks a lot for us. She got me connected with a gentleman who did all the Claremont County parks. Like physically hiked them with a handle of G P S and mapped them. But after discussing with him, he's agreed to do that for us in all of our parks. Walk them, map them, and then he goes up front to train some of our staff. Uh, on how to do that. So moving forward, you know, we change trails and trails, we can continue to have those updated records for all of our purposes. Um, so, you know, I talked to John, he's on board with some of his folks and. If P D has anybody that wants to, wants to get it set up, and then the the gentleman talked about doing it. All time, winter time, depending on weather, when the rainy season hits and he's an older guy who's retired, so it may not be super quick, but. Definitely relevant if we get that state grants cap or state cap grant to do the marking, it'd be nice to have all the actionable. Maps of everything.
I want to go back to something you said, you said he's an old guy, so it may not.
He's an older gentleman.
So so what you're saying is that old guys would take longer on the trail, right?
They're careful relative because. I completely told him that I wouldn't like to do it. I use the backpack all the time, but I'm P D, I can't physically do it, so he can run circles around me. But he told me that he used to do this, and he had a business. Retired, but he enjoys doing it, he'd be happy to help us. He's actually got some of our stuff already done, he's been in our parks, I'm enjoying it. So he'd win for us and then go possible. Pretty good. These are, these are actually, uh, before pictures, okay, if anyone needed clarification on that, so that's actually. That would be a beautiful.
Say that.
They look a lot better after this. Uh, but the house on Paul Road isn't.
Yeah. Uh, I, you think, I don't want to get me down, it's just, that's not where I want to go with this, but. One thing that I I continually thought is that when it comes to economic development. We do get base sets and I think that's that's great, and I think you guys have done a good job. So we are going, it's not criticism of of what anybody's done. But it's what somebody is not, that is, is driving us, and that is. This county and the state have not identified one twenty five as a high priority economic development quarter. They give some lip service to it, but I see a lot of other communities getting significantly more, uh, investment. For their, for their, you know, roadways than we're getting, and I think that has to change. For us to get, you know, really doubles and triples out of our economic development. That's nothing that we've done wrong. It's just, it's time for the county to realize that one twenty five is an economic development part. Pointed this out to county officials and state officials, you've given me the same money you've given other communities. Um, and I would give you as well, you know, a fourfold or a fivefold return on your investment above what they're doing. Not a crisis. So we're going to have to start to step off that, that drum on that county side saying, look, it is about. That you invest in my quarter. I've seen you invest in all sorts of other quarters. I've seen all sorts of lovely roundabouts all over the place. It is time that one twenty five, get the attention that it deserves. And otherwise, we can continue to look as it does, functions does. That's what we're going to have to do, that 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 one twenty five quarters that we're going to need to get that adopted. So that we can start moving forward and saying, look, this is what we want, this is what we view, and my guy has done it. Otherwise, you're just going to continue to have the same problem, right? But, yeah, let let's say you get a development that fits like a law, right? But it requires that there's going to be a hundred and twenty five new cars pushed out on one twenty five, or two hundred new cars. Pushed out on one twenty five every day.
Part of the problem is I don't know if you can do township, if they do township necessarily, so they should, they should.
We have an opportunity because we have a different crew of a new township and they're and they're meaningful to working. So I think we've got an opportunity there that we can make that statement.
Red Tiger did so.
Love sixty thousand dollars. Actually, the Red Tiger has actually. And that was the one we talked about, expansion and improvement of our parks, so one twenty five quarters, I mean, was actually done by.
It was done by the blinders and it was, it's more of an access management plan. So some of that David.
Now, what you use these studies for, it's for to discuss, what you can use these studies for is justification of. Uh, you know, reaching out, saying, this is an investment you can make. So that we can say, this study looked at the nodes, this is report, this is what it's it's identifying. Way it is identified ways to improve this roadway, flawed function, um, the the ability to move traffic efficiently. And you use that as the argument for, this is why the county needs staff, this is why the county needs staff. And and so that's what these things are are good for doing, but we have not taken that up and passed them. I think we need to, but I think there's some pieces that still mechanically need to go in place before we do them. I I think that the way we left the conversation last year about smaller homes. Because it was done during COVID, there wasn't, um, any, um, real public input, um, provided. On each of those, particularly the mass access management. And I know that one particular business owner, um, it while can, uh, will is, you know. Concerned about what their plans may be and how it could impact them. So the question was, do you want to go ahead and approve this? Before you provide an opportunity for a round table or some sort of discussion with the problems of each one of the nodes and. You know, how do we go about that? And then you can talk about that a lot and say, you know, do you have to have a separate conversation with each of the four nodes? Because otherwise you're going to have four groups of people in there and they aren't going to care about. One thing is being discussed that more of a ten mile, but they may really concerned be concerned about another one of the intersections. And so it almost comes down to that, but, you know, I don't know what what degree the board wants to take that step. If I recall, that's what kind of held it up at the last, before, you know, why you decided you didn't want to go ahead? Because you felt like we needed to have some public engagement, right? And to be clear, it's not, it's not really, I mean, it's not, I'm not suggesting that it's being held up by any staff in action, it's just. Other things have come forward, other things have gotten in its way, but I think now would be a good moment. To to re reengage that discussion and talk about, do we want to just have a meeting to let people communicate the tires?
I think we should, that elevates the visibility of the whole concept, actually. If you do that, hopefully gets a good turnout. So I think that will attract attention from our neighboring township trustees and perhaps they rather, perhaps he should be asked to attend as a matter of fact. And perhaps we should invite, uh, Union Township, uh. Trustee staff.
Well, the notes actually, just just to be clear, the the notes actually just focused on our side of the river and and how our side of it could be more efficient. For for instance, why that intersection, why are getting ten now twenty five? How is that? How can we make that flow more efficient? And so those were the ones that we focused on primarily. Uh, and and our side, because we knew we wouldn't be able to focus on their side. We couldn't necessarily assume that they would make any impact on us. So what would, what would, what would be the best impact for us? So to that extent, I really hope it's involved, certainly our friends in that particular.
But if you go ahead, there could be a saying this to, they hired anybody who has a state. Uh, strategy on individual, uh, closer projects, so, uh, you're trying to show the need and sort of think that was based off of. So, I mean, I I think if it makes perfect sense, there's a cost, uh, simple on that. That's great. But I was trying to see, so next that, like, he's saying, is there, is there any kind of. Advantage from this person, what you're stating with that, uh, they had multiple. I I understand it's it's a road that is looking at certain sides of us, but. Can't really, um, be coupled up in your side sometimes, sort of, certainly particularly in our stations and stuff like that, so.
Well, I mean, to the extent that they want to participate, you you've experienced discussions with the other side of the road. To the extent that they wish to participate, certainly there's a bit of that on the tenant with it. Um, could we expect anything out of that? But at the end of the day, I will tell you that when you go for grant funds. The key person, the key entity that we want, oh, because the the ultimate owner of one twenty five is the state of Ohio. And so state of Ohio would often greatly appreciate having those statements and having those documents, so the facts out in investment. So it's not just, we kind of feel like it's good. And so they they like seeing that record order, you know, recommendation that this is how this could be improved. We didn't feel, it's really the end of it, we need to be at the needs to be updated, so. Right? Sounds like a creative. My hat was, no, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to say that, so that we shouldn't try to include those, I'm just simply saying. A lot of the decision making, I'm just going to do ours.
Tell you, all the work that they did on thirty two. As somebody that lives east of here. They pretty much just created an effective way to get home by not coming through Pierce Township. I mean, it's not what it was to do out thirty two, to pay you that one twenty two, one to five. So, I mean, they're redirect. Absolute.
Yeah, I mean, I think what what is the the volume of traffic in one section of one point five? Just right outside of Provo, that then is about thirty thousand cars a day. Well, decisions are being made and and it has an impact. When you look at some other communities, decisions that were made in Pierce Township have had an impact on those communities. It's wild, I'm very surprised. So the market starts to move in another direction and now it dried up over here. So it is great that thirty two is moving more efficiently, that is great, and it's wonderful for for Union Township. But it's not great for Pierce Township necessarily. If you just want, but. But we need to be there to rock them.
Effectively did open the rock out.
Thirty two?
Yeah, true that.
But I think we saw the other day the consequences of that, they they wildized. The road was supposed to be five hour, no, and everybody sitting there, no way to exit the road, we can get out, we're something of course.
So that's, that's just something I think we're going to, to really spend some time on, really the moment in that. Tell them the county that this is important, the state, this is important, you need to lead the rest.
Alright. What else?
Yeah, so I think also, I I have nothing. I'm looking at the road database, uh, we have one point eight million dollars in roadways that are branded as a letter D. And since all the extra money that we're getting, we're now back down to about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a day each year. So those roads are going to be D for seven. So those roads are going to be D for seven point two years. It's initially. Once they sort of clear, they sort of clear fast. They have a lot of A's and Bs, which still have a lot of Bs. And with the very small, heavy budget compared to the model that we need today is an issue. Considering that we, when four wheel to go over there and let a mile road down to it, we were paying two hundred thousand dollars a year until slipping beyond. So.
I mean, the the price to buy a. The magic number, right, to to pull is about five hundred thousand.
In fact, we found four.
If we were to get up to five, that would give us.
Now, those, they they pay in road fees for those, but a big majority of that was in a minute because it was in such dire need. So they didn't fix the need that existed at Pierce Township.
Legendary runs do a lot, several other communities. It's it's time for recreated. Yeah, recommended.
Alternative revenue sources.
Our revenue sources are stuck with where they're at. I mean, there's nothing.
There's going to be alternative revenue sources.
And then the, we need a large salt that are that are rusted out pretty badly. But we've got to tend to too. And they're now roughly around two hundred thousand dollars a piece for us. I've been working on getting pricing on for one this year. Luckily enough, they threw a grant that will assist us in that. But the more I get to reading about it, the more we start digging into it. Can be very limited on what we can do with one truck. Basically, all the couples do is update the salt spread or update the salt spreader. And that's about it. Nothing else on the truck. So. Short term, is there any allowance in regulations that will allow you to tip funds for those sort of adjacent roadways or? Well, I don't elaborate on that more, but tip funds are very limited. They, like the Walmart tip, for instance, is so locked down, you can't use it for anything. Typically, you use tip funds, it's got some sort of kind of accrue, but not just resurfaced. Why any live or live vision?
You can use it if it resurfaces, but it has to be like, for instance, we got Preston tip. And so at some point, we could theoretically use tip money from Preston to repair the roads inside Preston. And so we've been able to leak some of that money out by arguing that people who live in Preston, they also drive on COVID. They also use Bradbury and roads like that. Problem that we have is that Preston is is land, right? It's got a county road in front of it, county road next to it. And so that's, you know, I can't flow that money out of the legislature route. So that's the concern I had about that tip revenue that at a certain point it was locked down and wrapped. Touch it and thus be eliminated and and just flow into the general fund. Now, when it comes to the 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 tip at Walmart, you get one point. One, about seven, I think they're getting closer. Well, none of the years. We've got about five years. Either way, I mean, so this is, I mean, we're going to solve this sort of problems higher. There's no, if we, there's no amount of tip funds you can use for roads. They have to be served with purpose benefiting where the tip. Like if it be like brand or if it be used for fresh. You know.
That's more or less my question. The road waste that China was for the leaves. The, for instance, with the Ramon Walmart, there that can be used for those. This is short term. It's not a long term. It is for short term purposes. That's about the question. I, I mean, we have a few, but I don't think the problem is that tip is the way the rhythm is so definitive that it's for firehouse and for fire related.
Well, there is some margin of excess you can you can use it for, but the problem is, again, you got one thirty two on one side, you got one twenty five on the other side. So those are statements, county roads. I think the roads behind it. All right.
So, yeah.
To literally use it, but we can rerun. And we can amend that. And that's something I think we took up into.
And it's not that I'm hoping for the answer now. I don't want to put it on a radar, but people have an idea. I mean, yeah, but it's not all about anything to do with the league. But it's always for the township and I think it needs to be something that needs to be raised up a bar a little higher.
In January, that'd be this. Yeah, every every A road is going to be a D road.
We might as well be in that big down.
Way to go, John. All right, anything else? Anything else guys? Gentlemen, no, Debbie. With that, I was going to make a motion to adjourn. Go, go, Debbie.
Mr. Collins, Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, guys. Okay.